Okay, we'll call the meeting to order at 5:03 PM. This evening, the flag salute will be led by Marley Moreau from Potter Junior High.
Please stand. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may now be seated.
Alright, so we will move to item number three in Infuse Student Introduction, and I will turn it over to Mrs. Martin.
Good evening. We've got a big crowd here. Tonight, I am so proud and happy to present our two student representatives from Potter Junior High. You've already heard from Ms. Marley, and we have M. down here, Srinlak, at the end, who is going to introduce a little video. I don't want to give away everything she's going to say, so take it away, M.
We are excited to share a few great moments from the last two weeks in FUSE schools with our students and staff. You will see Lunch at the Lawn at La Paloma Elementary, our long-range facilities master plan parent in planned parent input meetings at Fallbrook STEM Academy at May Ellis Elementary, and highlights from the Dondorin End Games.
And board gets to come up and get pictured. So now we will move on to the Employee of the Year and the Teacher of the Year and the Retiree Recognition.
I'm going to now turn this over to Mr. Morris. I'm just, I'm still in awe at the crowd. No, I think it's awesome.
All right. Well, good evening, Dr. McCray, members of the board, Ms. Martin, my colleague, Dr. Husing, and all of our friends and staff and family that are here. This is so great to see everybody. I wish every board meeting we had a packed house like this. That'd be fun. Oh, this is great. Well, that's correct. Tonight is probably the most rewarding opportunity for all of us at board meetings throughout the year because we get to recognize our Employees of the Year, our Teachers of the Year, and tonight, we have a special recognition of our North Coastal Consortium Teacher of the Year, as well as all of our certificated and classified retirees. Very cool. Okay, first, we're going to recognize our Employees of the Year and Teachers of the Year together with their principal. These staff were selected at all school sites and district departments. Tonight, the principals and managers will come up to the podium here and speak briefly about each of their site's recipients. Where's my principals at? Okay. Briefly, okay. All right. At the end, we will recognize our District Employee of the Year and Teacher of the Year. And then Dr. Husing will come up and recognize our North Coastal Consortium Teacher of the Year, and then we'll bring up our retirees and recognize them. Now, most important order of business, photos. Okay. Mr. Trench will be taking really fancy, pretty photos the whole time, and if anybody wants to get up and kind of shoot a photo, we won't throw you out or anything, okay? You can shoot those, but so, uh, but do we hear our, our, our recognition, people being recognized will be here, so you know, get up as needed. And principals, you just need to follow in order as we go, okay? So we'll do that. Now, our first up then, sorry, yes, why don't you come on up? Yes, yeah, bring them both up.
Okay, Mandy and Kimberly, come on up.
So I will go in order. So, good evening, Governing Board, Cabinet members, and all of our guests in the audience. My name is Anna Arias, and I am the Principal of Fallbrook STEM Academy. So it is with great honor and admiration that we celebrate today the invaluable contributions of an amazing individual at Fallbrook STEM Academy. It is with great honor that we recognize Kimberly Diaz, who has dedicated her time, passion, and expertise to working with young children in our learning center as a para educator. In a world where inclusivity and empathy are cherished virtues, Mrs. Diaz has exemplified the true essence of these values. Her commitment to supporting and nurturing the growth of her students is an inspiration to all of us. Kimberly demonstrates an extraordinary level of patience, understanding, and compassion. As needed, Mrs. Diaz adapts to her approach to meeting the individual needs of each child she works with. Mrs. Diaz strives to ensure her students are successful. Her colleagues truly admire the connections and relationships she has with all of her students. Mrs. Diaz has dedicated the past 10 years to FSA, making a difference in the lives of those who need it the most, leaving a mark on the hearts and minds of the students she serves. Please join me in expressing our deepest gratitude and appreciation for her selflessness, dedication, and commitment to our students at Fallbrook STEM Academy. Thank you, Mrs. Diaz, for all that you do. So, it is a great honor that I stand here to recognize our second extraordinary individual, Mandy Jeminer, Mrs. Jem, FSA's Teacher of the Year. Mandy is more than deserving of this recognition for her unwavering dedication, passion, and genuine care for her students. In the realm of education, there are those who simply teach, and then there are those who inspire. Mandy definitely falls into the latter category. Her commitment to the success and well-being of each and every student is truly remarkable. She has the ability to ignite a spark within her students, to nurture their potential, and to help them realize their dreams, something not easy to do with our super cool, know-it-all sixth graders. Students feel safe, supported, and loved in the Learning Center. It is common to hear parents acknowledge how she is a source of comfort and reassurance for them. Mrs. Jem truly understands that education is not just about acquiring knowledge, but also instilling confidence, nurturing character, and fostering a love of learning. She recognizes that each student is unique with different strengths and challenges, and in her Learning Center, she goes above and beyond to tailor her teaching methods to meet the individual needs of her students while making learning fun. Mandy's energy is infectious, and it radiates through her teaching, inspiring even the most reluctant learners to push beyond their limits and reach for the stars. Colleagues describe her as having a quiet personality on campus, but a force for her students. Amongst her colleagues, she is a true leader, collaborating with them and sharing her knowledge and mentoring new teachers. It is a pleasure to acknowledge Mrs. Jeminer and the invaluable role that she plays in shaping the lives of so many students. She is a guiding light who ignites the flame of curiosity. She embodies all that is remarkable about this column. Congratulations, Mrs. Jem.
Good evening, Mrs. Martin, Cabinet and Governing Board. It is with heartfelt warmth and gratitude that I present Ms. Sophia Perry, La Paloma's Classified Employee of the Year. However, Ms. Sophia is no stranger to Fallbrook or to La Paloma. In fact, all four of her sons went through our school, and she has volunteered in many of our classrooms throughout the years. Later down the road, she then became one of our paraprofessionals in our IBI classroom and is currently working as our Behavior Tech. However, Sophia Perry is not just any Behavior Tech. She is our student's cheerleader, caregiver, emotional support provider, relationship builder, teacher, advocate, and their biggest fan. Sophia comes to work each day with a smile on her face, and she truly loves her job. She helps our students be the best they can be and teaches them the skills and strategies to help them be successful in our school community. Sophia works diligently and tirelessly with our students and never gives up on them. She is a skillful magician, one with tips and tricks up her sleeve, all with one goal in mind, to help our kids. She builds long-lasting, trusting relationships with her students and is so wonderful to watch her students blossom and grow under her care. She loves our kids, and they in turn love her, as do we. La Paloma is so lucky to have her working at our school, and we appreciate all she has done for us and our students. Congratulations, Sophia. You deserve this honor and so much more.
Good evening, Mrs. Martin, Cabinet and Governing Board, and attendees. It is an honor to recognize Dale Leonard as La Paloma's Teacher of the Year. To say that Dale is a dedicated, passionate, and highly knowledgeable educator is putting it lightly. Dale has been a teacher in FU ESD for 24 years. Dale lives and breathes the La Paloma spirit. His heart and dedication to La Paloma is evident in that he is currently the longest tenure at La Paloma, 24 years. Not only has he taught at La Paloma in grades fifth and sixth, he has also taught in the summer programs at Potter, Santa Nobre, Mary Fay Pendleton, and Frazier. Dale is a collaborative and supportive educator, both as a teacher and as a colleague. He goes above and beyond for his school. Not only is he a sixth-grade teacher and the grade-level lead, but he is also our administrative designee and helps us out a lot, and a member of our La Paloma Safety Team. He also supports his fellow colleagues as a Vice President of the Fallbrook Elementary Teachers Association. This school year, Dale serves as the Lead Teacher for the After School ELO Program. Dale, you are a natural leader, and you have taken on the role and transformed our ACEs program. You are organized and helpful in facilitating all of the different classes after school and working with our families and students. He is supportive of all the staff and students. Dale is professional, thoughtful, and driven, and we are so lucky to have him at La Paloma. These words reiterate what everyone at La Paloma has to say about you, Dale. Thank you for your leadership, hard work, and dedication. It is an honor to work with you, and we are so proud to recognize you today and every day for all you do and continue to do for La Paloma.
Good evening, Mrs. Martin, Cabinet and Governing Board members and members of the audience. My name is Patty Parson, and I am the Principal at Live Oak Elementary School. It is an honor and a privilege tonight to recognize our amazing custodian, Maria Ixta. She could not be with us tonight. She said she's too shy. Maria is Live Oak's Classified Employee of the Year. She works extremely hard every day, and she always does it with a smile. She is relentless in her efforts to make sure everything is clean and perfect for our students and our staff, all while being so humble and never taking any credit. Maria is a team player. She's always willing to do all she can for both the students and the staff at Live Oak. She has played an integral part in the implementation of our new recycling program during recess and lunchtimes. One of her colleagues said she is one of the hardest workers in the room. She does so much more than just clean. She is a friend, a great colleague, and a role model for our students. Other Live Oak staff stated Maria is always dependable and always willing to go above and beyond when asked. She's friendly, she's helpful, and so hardworking. We are incredibly fortunate to have such a friendly, hard-working, helpful person as a staff member at Live Oak. Congratulations, Maria. It is an extreme honor and a privilege to nominate Ms. Lauren Hunter as Live Oak's Certificated Employee of the Year. I have had the fortune of working with Lauren at Live Oak Elementary School for the past five years, where she has served as a physical education teacher. Lauren is a great teacher and a great person. She is highly respected by her colleagues, and she's loved by our students. Lauren always puts others first and is extremely generous with her time and her knowledge. In the past five years, Lauren has dutifully served Live Oak in capacities that far exceed her duties. She is currently the facilitator of one of our student lighthouse teams and led our school-wide effort for lighthouse recertification last year as our lighthouse coordinator. She is the chairperson of our school site council and a member of our PBIS team. In addition, she is currently the Lead Teacher for our FU ESD After School Program, organizing and facilitating intervention. With the growing needs of our parent and student community at Live Oak, Lauren also works very closely with site administration, serving as admin designee whenever we need her. Lauren's support and talents at Live Oak are a large contributor to our overall success. Lauren's colleagues say she is always willing to go above and beyond. She has a great PE program, and she works hard for all our students. She is extremely admirable, and her hard work never goes unnoticed. We are so lucky to have Lauren on our staff at Live Oak.
Hi, Katie. Ms. Avila.
Good evening, Governing Board, Mrs. Martin, members of Cabinet. Distinguished guest, I'm Dr. Alex Gonzalez, Principal at May Ellis Elementary. And it is with great pleasure to honor Ms. Katie Draves as May Ellis Employee of the Year. Mrs. Draves has served as our librarian for the past eight years. During this time, she has organized and led very successful book fairs, literacy events, and has increased the number of books available to our Mustangs, especially in Spanish. Mrs. Drave comes in contact and connects with every single Mustang, knowing what they like to read and what they are interested in. She patiently has to handle every single technology issue that the students have, large or small. And even though she only sees students 30 minutes a week, every student loves visiting her and having a story read to them, exploring the shelves, even if they say, "I don't like to read." She is funny, caring, and patient with all her students. Or as Caroline and Alexis shared, Mrs. Draves has a soft and opinion-voiced. She sounds like the voice of epic in Sora. Mrs. Draves is also credited for securing $17,000 in grant money that helped create our Camp Read program, which has served as a morning reading area for our early birds at May Ellis. Camp Read has over 1,000 books in Spanish and English available to students and is open five days a week, starting at 7:30 when she arrives. Celebrating Mrs. Draves is not only an honor, it is fun. I asked staff to share a few comments to help me honor Mrs. Draves, and the response was overwhelming. In summary, Mrs. Draves is appreciated and loved by her Mustang family. And honoring her as Employee of the Year is just a small way of saying gracias. We really had to convince Ms. Avila to come here tonight. She is a little shy. The Teacher of the Year award is reserved for individuals that make contributions to education that go above and beyond. This distinguished award brings life to individuals' commitment, devotion, dedication, and passion. For these reasons, it is with great pleasure to honor Ms. Emily Avila as Teacher of the Year. Ms. Avila has started sixth grade at May Ellis for the past eight years. During this time, she has become a pillar of strength and consistency in sixth grade. Ms. Avila has coordinated the staff lighthouse for the past three years. It has transformed our student lighthouse. Due to her enthusiasm and positive approach, our Leader in Me program at May Ellis has never been stronger. Because of her, we have over 30 student-led clubs actively running at May Ellis. Ms. Avila is the kind of teacher her students will always remember. She brings a contagious enthusiasm to every room she walks into and greets every day with an infectious positivity. You know when Ms. Avila is in the staff lounge from the roar of the laughter that can be heard from down the hall. Her love for her work, paired with her excitement and sense of humor, make her, make every day a more positive experience for all. Because of this, her impact on May Ellis goes well beyond her classroom walls. She is a component to the tremendous culture that makes us viva May Ellis. Ms. Avila's generosity and love has impacted thousands of students in the Fallbrook community. One sitting right in front of us right here. And this honor is well overdue. With this recognition, we not only commemorate Ms. Avila's work for the past year, but also celebrate and honor her trajectory as a passionate and compassionate educator that has dedicated her life to this noble cause as an advocate, a cheerleader, and ambassador of education. Congratulations, Ms. Avila.
Good evening. Mrs. Martin, Board and Cabinet, thank you for joining us all here tonight. We've got a packed house. I am here with two dedicated employees, and that's going to be our theme for the night with Mary Fay is dedication. We have our Classified Employee of the Year, Bree Mello. She is our nurse at Mary Fay Pendleton. So it's not her first time up here, and I doubt it'll be her last time up here. She was overwhelmingly nominated, and I was so happy to see all of the kind things that people say about her. She's dedicated, she's student-centered, kids love her, she works extremely hard. We have the busiest school nurse office in the district, I would assume. And she sees kids all the way from preschool to eighth grade, and my, the thing that impresses me most with Bree is she will have students who come in just for a little bit of love, a little bit of ice. They got a, maybe got bumped on the playground, maybe not. And they just need a little time out with her, all the way up to students who are having grandma seizures in the middle of the class. And she's on it, she's there, she has all of the response package with her. Keeps a cool head, keeps everybody else cool and calm, and has carried us through many an emergency, so. Bree, we thank you so much. We have yours. And we also have our certificated employee of the year, Kelly Ploss. So happy to be introducing her here tonight. Kelly's been with us for two years now at Mary Fay Pendleton and has made a huge impression on the school and in our community. She is an active-duty military spouse, was wife, and that's what brought her to Mary Fay. She, she kind of watched us for a year and then decided to jump on board with us last year. And we've really put her to work. She, she has a big job to fill. She, she is in one of our inclusion programs at the, at the site. She works with kids in transitional kindergarten all the way up through first grade with a varying degree of disabilities. She loves them all, and they love her back. Her families love her back, and most importantly, she's developed amazing relationships within the site and with all of her colleagues. Her dedication to the site is what has really rocketed her up to being here as a Teacher of the Year within only being at her site for two years. It's often that I see her there, 7:30 or before in the morning, and late into the evening sometimes, and I know she works weekends too, crafting her IEPs and organizing her statistics for her reports. So, Kelly, it is a great, deserving act.
Okay. Unfortunately, for me, I'm going a little solo today. I know. They actually want to apologize with their heartfelt apologies for not attending. They would have been here for any reasons, but they had other engagements for this evening, so we're going to represent. I'm going to have the girls pretend they're the two Potter teachers now. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Martin, School Board and Cabinet. I am Dr. Powers. I'm the Principal of Potter Junior High. We want to recognize and acknowledge two of our fantastic We want to recognize and acknowledge two of our fantastic employees who really bring about a lot of our culture to our school. Our first one for classified is Ms. Robin Duarte, who is our librarian. Someone who grew up in Fallbrook, decided to move back to Fallbrook after living in New York, and decided she wanted to come and work in Fallbrook where her children went through. She started out as a librarian at Fraser, loving every moment of it. As her children got older, she moved with her kids and came to Potter fourteen and a half years ago. She's remained at Potter feeling that she loves this age group and is a perfect fit for all the work she does for the community. She feels extremely lucky and working with such wonderful colleagues. Robin not only goes above and beyond with the stuff that she does at Potter with her students, but we love when she has Starbucks Cafe. So she creates an amazing environment through all the seasons and makes sure that students sign up, they get invitations, they get seated, they have an array of different literature that they can have, and they get to win Starbucks. Or Starbucks? Yeah, Starbucks. Starbucks. So she annually hosts these events. She assists staff, assists the staff with needing and looking for support for resources. And she also always has her doors open at the beginning of the day, break and lunch for students to go in and just find a quiet place to have lunch, play games, or just read literature. So we want to congratulate Robin for all the great work she does and for all the things that she does for Potter. Our certificated teacher is Ms. Anne Rockovitz. Many of you know her, she's our seventh-grade ELA and Avid teacher. She teaches honors this year. She was born in San Diego. She majored in sociology and then decided to take a class in sociology and education and decided, you know what, I want to work as a bilingual teacher. So she started in the San Diego Unified School District, took a year off, decided to teach Spanish in an immersion program in Guadalajara, Mexico. And it was a lifelong dream for her to become bilingual. Then she returned to San Diego and decided, you know what, I have a weekend trip to Fallbrook, and I want to live there. And fifteen years later, she continues to be at Potter. She has taught newcomer, ELA, ELD, and now she's our avid teacher. She is one of our lead teachers in our school and her department. She served one year as an ELD TOSA for our district. More than anything, she loves supporting language. She loves supporting students' voice and expressing their unique perspectives through collaboration, speaking, and writing. Anne Rockovitz goes above and beyond for her students. She is dedicated, she loves writing with her students. They just did these great activities where they read these great novels. I think some of you guys have been in her class. And they just take full responsibility in just taking literature to that next place. She guides her students to the full potential. And we are so proud to have Anne represent Potter as our Teacher of the Year.
Good evening, Governing Board members, Ms. Martin, members of Cabinet, student leaders. My name is Joe Nysley, I'm the Principal at Fallbrook St. Academy, and it's my honor. Oh my goodness. I saw Anna, she messed me up. Santa Nofre School. That's the first time I've done that. And she's, you know. Okay. I'm at Santa Nofre School. First year there. All right, I'm here to recognize two amazing ladies. So let's start with Kelly Espinoza. Kelly has been an employee at Santa Nofre School for the past twenty-eight years. Her contributions and commitment to student growth and well-being cannot be overstated. She began as a playground supervisor, but the majority of her time has been working as a paraprofessional in our special education program. Kelly is described by those who work most closely with her as the most exceptional professional, paraprofessional they've ever worked with. She is a true professional, and her ability to effectively teach and actively engage a small group of students or an entire class is a testament to her versatility and adaptability. Her knowledge is diverse and expansive, and she always goes above and beyond to ensure that her students receive the highest quality education possible. It is also clear that Kelly has a deep understanding of the unique challenges that military children face. And she approaches each student with the compassion and understanding that they deserve. Kelly is a master at predicting the needs of her students and the teachers that she works with. Her ability to anticipate potential roadblocks and find effective solutions is a skill that few possess. Kelly's colleagues and students alike benefit from her tireless dedication to her work. Her steadfast commitment to meeting the individual goals of her students is truly inspiring. No matter the task, Kelly approaches it with efficiency and precision, and the results speak for themselves. The impact that Kelly has had on students at Santa Nofre is immeasurable. Her unwavering dedication to her craft has inspired countless students to reach their full potential. And Kelly has helped shape the lives of so many young people. Her legacy will be felt for years to come. It is my honor to recognize Kelly Espinoza not only as Santa Nofre's Employee of the Year, but as the District's Employee of the Year. Congratulations. And our Teacher of the Year, Melissa Koppel. Melissa is a dedicated and compassionate speech pathologist. She has been described by her peers as superwoman. Because she's been given this moniker because she can handle heavy special education caseloads with ease, poise, and accuracy without sacrificing the strong relationship she builds with students, colleagues, and parents. Melissa's hard work and commitment to her students and colleagues is truly inspiring. And it's clear that she is making a positive impact in the lives of everyone she encounters. Melissa's knowledge and expertise in her field are appreciated by everyone. And her ability to present complex reports and data in easily comprehensible ways is an asset to her parents, it's an asset that her parents appreciate and her colleagues try to emulate. Her thoughtfulness and compassion in answering questions and addressing concerns are further examples of her strong character and outstanding leadership. Mrs. Koppel's students love her and are always eager to go to her speech class. Her students know that she cares and loves them, and they appreciate knowing specifically what they're learning and why it's important to learn the skills that they are. They know their speech goals, and they know what they need to do to reach those goals. Melissa treats all staff, students, and parents with the utmost respect and attention. Everyone at Santa Nofre is fortunate to be able to work with Mrs. Koppel, and Santa Nofre would not be the school it is without her. So on behalf of everyone at Santa Nofre, it is my honor to congratulate Mrs. Melissa Koppel as our Teacher of the Year.
All right, good evening, Governing Board members, Mrs. Martin, members of Cabinet and audience members. My name's Erica Rainey, I'm the Principal at William H. Fraser Elementary. It is my pleasure and honor to recognize Mrs. Amalia Delgado Dyo. She unfortunately, well, she's shy too. And so she just, you know, one of those employees that feels the love, but could not make it here because she's feeling a little shy. So we're going to share the love with her right now, maybe she's watching virtually. But I'm recognizing her as Fraser's Employee of the Year. She exemplifies the role of a safety monitor at our school and has been working in our district for the past seventeen years. She is dedicated and consistently goes above and beyond her responsibilities on a daily basis. She comes to work with a consistent positive attitude and a smile on her face every day. She is professional, courteous, and when she's interacting with students, staff members, and Fraser families on a daily basis. As a member of our staff shared, Amalia is an incredibly kind, considerate, and caring supervisor every day. The students know that they can turn to her when they need help and that she's there to support them and keep them safe. Another staff member noted that you can always count on her no matter what is needed. She is always smiling and willing to help. Mercer Hosway, our day custodian, says that she is the best Gigi ever. She is, she's just like a grandma, and you just want to hug her. And so that's what we call around, it's Gigi. And so Amalia is kind, gets along well with all staff and students at Fraser. She can always be counted on, and she is one of a kind and truly appreciated for all she does. She's a true professional, and we recognize her as Fraser's Employee of the Year. So. Right, it is an honor and a privilege to recognize Mrs. Katie Tomlinson as William H. Fraser's Teacher of the Year. Katie has been teaching in our district only for the last couple of years as a full-time intervention teacher and most currently a first-grade teacher at Fraser. She's an advocate for her students, and many members of our staff recognize that she goes above and beyond to meet the needs of her students on a daily basis. And with just the fact of being in our district for the past two years and her standing here should just tell you just how amazing and what a great person she really is. She's dedicated and holds her students to high expectations, both academically and behaviorally, with her nurturing support and guidance. Her classroom environment is welcoming and promotes the social and academic successes of all her students. As one colleague mentioned, Katie is a true gem and is a blessing to every student that she works with. A different colleague mentioned that Katie is an enthusiastic teacher who cares deeply for her students' well-being and academic successes. She shares her great ideas, inspires our team on a daily basis. Being a great teacher, she is a great friend and incredibly supportive team member. She is friendly, thoughtful, hardworking, and will stop whatever she is doing in order to help her colleagues at Fraser. One of her students said, "Mrs. Tomlinson is nice," and she helps us learn. She's also very funny and smart. She always takes care of us, and she tries her best to make learning fun. She always talks about her dogs Kevin and Gary, which is really funny. So, within this past school year alone, Katie has offered support to support students that needed a little extra love with behavior. She started a meal train for a colleague that was going through a very difficult time and has created a farewell poster, most recently, for our school counselor that the entire school assigned. And we presented that to him at our leadership ceremony last Friday. He's leaving for a year to serve our country. And so I'm just beyond fortunate to have Katie as our Teacher of the Year. You are truly.
So they were super shy and tried to get out of this today. But I told them that they couldn't, and then when we were sitting back there, Jackie looked at me and goes, "I could have watched this on TV," and I said, "No, you couldn't have."
Good evening, Governing Board, Cabinet, and members of the audience. My name is Amy Pleat, the Principal of Special Programs. And it is my pleasure to tell you about two of my fantastic colleagues at the Mike Choat Early Childhood Center. Our Teacher of the Year is Mrs. Jackie Bestman, or Miss Jackie, as she is lovingly called. At Mike Choat, no one really has a last name. Miss Jackie is our speech and language pathologist. She is adept at providing services to our students and helping them grow and meet their goals. Miss Jackie lights up a room when she enters it. Her friendly and approachable personality is contagious and comforting to students, parents, and staff. Her door is always open to support those around her. I like to think of her as like the mayor of Mike Choat. So no one can walk past her office or past her in the hall without saying hello to her. She makes sure we celebrate our employees and never ever forget someone's birthday or an important milestone in their life. Miss Jackie also serves as a mentor to SLP interns and supports newly hired SLPs. I like to imagine that years from now, she will have this amazing army of skilled and loving SLPs throughout our district. She is an integral part of the MCC team, and we are happy to recognize her as the Teacher of the Year. Our Employee of the Year is Mrs. Guadalupe Bolanos, or Miss Peta, as she is so lovingly called by the students and staff. Are you seeing a powder in here? Miss Peta works as a special education assistant to supporting students, staff, and families in our self-contained classes. She is calm and professional. If you've ever visited MCC, it is a happy, active, boisterous place filled with three- and four-year-olds. When you look out on the play yard, Miss Peta stands out as this very calming presence in a sea of activity. Students feel comfortable and safe with her. And you know, the longer you work in schools, the more you realize that what makes your school really run is all of the support staff. They are the people we often lean on the hardest. Her role isn't just improving students' lives, she makes school possible. It's Maslow's hierarchy. Kids must have their basic needs met before they can worry about learning. Miss Peta does that for our students. Miss Peta is an irreplaceable part of the MCC team, and we are honored to recognize her as the Employee of the Year.
I would like to thank the Governing Board and Cabinet members and Ms. Martin for this opportunity. It is with great pride and enthusiasm that I introduce to you Ms. Tanya Wald of Beta, this year's Transportation Employee of the Year. Tanya has been with the district since 2004, is one of our more experienced drivers. She was chosen by her coworkers and staff to represent our department. Tanya is highly respected and admired by not only the people she works with, but the students she transports on a daily basis. She also is very good at communicating with the parents, teachers, aides, and school personnel. She has determination and ability to stay on task and make sure the routes are kept up to date and organized. Tanya consistently challenges herself to learn more about the transportation part and looks to make our department a better place to work. She helps with monthly events to create a fun teamwork, interactive type of environment. We are thrilled to announce that Tanya has recently accepted a position as Transportation Technician Dispatcher. We are thrilled to see her grow within our department. We look forward to seeing what direction her efforts and dedication will do for the Transportation Department. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. So honored to be here tonight, I'm Amy Haisley, the Director for Child Nutrition Services. And I'm honored to introduce Esmeralda Mendez, our Child Nutrition Services Employee of the Year. Nobody recognized her when she walked in, because she doesn't dress like this. So thank you, Esmeralda, you've been nominated by your peers, and you are so well-deserving of this prestigious award. Esmeralda oversees the cafeteria at La Paloma Elementary. And when you meet her, you instantly know that she loves her job. Her kind heart and friendly attitude welcomes students and staff into the cafeteria every day. Her keen attention to detail ensures that she has what she needs to serve her students while maintaining organization and food safety in the district's tiniest kitchen. And I'd like to point out, that is extremely tricky to work in such tight spaces, and she pulls it off beautifully. So she has successfully trained new staff in our department. She consists- So she has successfully trained new staff in our department. She consistently demonstrates our values of kindness and collaboration. Esmeralda makes a tremendously positive impact in the lives of our students and her colleagues. So thank you, Esmeralda, for being such a vital part of our team, and I'm so proud of you and honored to work with you. Thank you.
It's a big crowd to get through. Good evening, um, governing board, Ms. Martin, cabinet, and members of the audience. I'm honored to speak about our District Office Employee of the Year, Ernesto Garcia Hernandez. He was born and raised in the Fallbrook area and Ernie attended FU ESD schools and began working with the district in 2014. He has worked his way through several positions and he has been a role model for others, an example of a person who knows how to set goals and achieve them. Ernie currently serves in the vital role of confidential payroll technician.
Everybody likes a paycheck.
Ernie is highly knowledgeable in all areas of payroll and is instrumental in assisting employees with situations that are often unique and intricate. Ernie is not only strong with technical information, but also with historical information about FU ESD and how the district has evolved. District office staff often seek Ernie's assistance with payroll questions, and Ernie is always willing to listen and provide support wherever he can, including translating for Spanish-speaking employees when needed. Ernie has tremendous people skills, always willing to take the time to listen and assist staff, whether it be on the phone or in person. Anyone who knows Ernie knows that he is genuine and truly cares about the FU ESD staff. Um, and here are some comments from the District Office staff describing Ernie. Ernie continuously goes above and beyond to assist anyone who needs help. He is friendly, knowledgeable, and embodies the spirit of FU ESD perfectly. Ernie is a fantastic employee and is well-deserving of this award. He is a team player and is always willing to provide support to anyone in the district. He is dedicated and keeps a positive attitude and is patient with employees. Ernie is very knowledgeable in every aspect of his job. He is always ready to help anyone who needs his help, whether it is related to his job or not. He can all, um, he can be seen helping out with HR matters, grounds, custodial, tech issues, anything you name it. He is highly deserving of this honor. His coworkers describe him as amicable and always willing to lend a hand, always letting everyone know, let me know if I can help. He is an expert in PeopleSoft, frontline, and Excel, and provides efficiencies when working on complex projects. He always has a positive attitude. Um, he's described as an overall good guy. And his enthusiasm helps make our department a great place to work. We are very proud to work with you, Ernie. Congratulations for being voted the 2223 Juster Bapa.
Oh my goodness, so much talent. Isn't it amazing? Uh, we get to work with them all the time. I need Emily and Kelly to come back up. Emily, Abila, Kelly, let's go. You don't get out that easily. Yeah. So their principals uh already spoke about them, but uh Emily and Kelly are amazing and just typified the, the best of what we have to offer. And they're so good at what they do, as are everyone else who was recognized. So let's just take a minute to recognize these two amazing ladies. You're popular.
Good evening. This weekend, several of us uh had the honor of participating in a job fair in San Diego. And um it, anyone would want to come and work in this district because look at the great employees, um, members and families we have in this district. So. So fun to be here. And as one of the newest members of the team, um, I serve as the Assistant Superintendent of Ed Services. I get to give this special award. Uh, so please help me honor Ms. Mitch. Miclin, I practiced three times, so now I'm nervous. Miclin Dorazo, is she here tonight?
Miclin. Thank you. So this is a special award. Um, board members, um, we have 14 districts in our San Diego County Office of Education that serve our school districts here in San Diego. And Ms. Miclin was nominated among all 14 districts. And she is our and the county's Teacher of the Year for Special Education. So Ms. Dorazo is an education specialist for second and third graders at May Ellis Elementary School, where she has served for three years. She joined the team in 2020 with previous experience in South Bay Union School District. In addition, Ms. Dorazo is a mentor in the induction program, and she serves new teachers, helping them to learn strategies and improve outcomes for our students. FU SD is so proud to have amazing teachers and staff serve our students. And Ms. Dorazo was selected among all nominations to represent special education, and we are just so proud. Thank you and congratulations.
Okay, for this next part, nobody's allowed to get teary-eyed, but we're gonna now recognize our retirees, okay?
Okay, um, we do have a favor to ask. We have quite a crowd tonight. So for the EOI Employee of the Year and Teacher of the Year families, if you're done, um, if you wouldn't mind stepping outside so the retiree families can, we'll just take a quick break. If you don't mind, otherwise sit tight and we'll, we'll try to accommodate.
That should be the CNS uniform. You look so beautiful.
All right, are we ready? All right, so. Thank you, um, everyone. So here, I'm very excited to kick off the retirees. So again, I stand here as the Principal of Fallbrook STEM Academy. It is my honor to celebrate the retirement of a truly exceptional individual who has left an indelible mark on our school and our lives, Mrs. Teresa Rowley. Today, we have the honor of paying tribute to a special, passionate, and hard-working teacher who has dedicated her career to fostering a love for knowledge and exploration in the hearts and minds of countless students at Fallbrook STEM Academy. Throughout the years here, about 11 in our district and over, about over 27 years, the age of some of our younger teachers. Mrs. Rowley, right. Mrs. Rowley has brought the wonders of science to life within her classroom, igniting lots of sparks of curiosity and instilling a thirst for discovery. This is evidence when you come into her classroom, her love and passion for science and for what she do, she does, is clear when you walk in. Her enthusiasm and dedication has been nothing short of inspiring. It is through her tireless efforts that we have witnessed, and I have witnessed, students embracing learning with joy and excitement, even when it's been a little bit of a rough year here and there. Mrs. Rowley has never shied away from going the extra mile, always ensuring that all of her students have the opportunity to learn, understand, and grow. Beyond the books, Teresa has provided a very nurturing environment that encouraged students to ask questions, explore new ideas, and make mistakes fearlessly. She has positively influenced her students by her genuine care and unwavering belief in the potential of each individual, which is very important to our students at Fallbrook STEM Academy. Last year, I was so moved by her empathetic nature when I learned about the collection of gift cards she keeps in her desk to hand out for students to ensure that their basic needs are met, something that we see a lot within our community. Her caring nature is truly admirable. Her inspiration has impacted so many of our students and our families. Our deepest gratitude to you, Mrs. Rowley, for your outstanding service, your unwavering commitment, modeling, authentic enthusiasm, and great teaching experiences and strategies. The immense impact you have made on the lives of our students in Fallbrook and other younger teachers is truly admirable. Your legacy, Mrs. Rowley, will continue to thrive through the students you have inspired, the young teachers at Fallbrook STEM Academy, all of your colleagues, and all of the countless lives you have touched. Your passion, hard work, and dedication will forever be etched in our memories at FSA and La Paloma. I know you started at La Paloma. May this retirement be filled with joy, relaxation, and countless new adventures. You have truly earned it, Mrs. Rowley. Thank you and congratulations on an extraordinary career.
Hola maestra. Good evening, governing board, again. Dr. Gonzalez, Principal of May Ellis Elementary, the very fortunate principal of May Ellis Elementary. Mrs. Martin, uh, members of the cabinet, uh, and special guests and student leaders. Tonight is with great honor and pleasure to sprinkle with a tab of melancholy that I stand here tonight uh to share a few words about Ms. Dupre's illustrious 44 years of teaching. Thirty, thirty-four, we're at May Ellis, if I'm not mistaken. Ms. Dupre has served and led many committees locally and statewide, has organized school-wide events as well as community events, but I'm not gonna talk about that tonight. However, I will talk about her love for this humble profession of ours and even a deeper love she has for the Fallbrook community. The impact Ms. Dupre has had in this community is immeasurable. How do you measure love? How do you measure passion, commitment, and ganas that will to succeed? Ms. Dupre has been an unapologetic advocate of bilingual education her whole career. Even when Proposition 227 became law and teachers were forbidden to teach in a language other than English, she persisted. Today, dual-language programs are the fastest-growing programs in California. And who must we thank for this? People like Ms. Dupre, who never gave up and continued to advocate and fight for bilingual education. And thanks to her, today, May Ellis is a school that not only embraces differences with love and respect, but is a school that is striving. Today is the day that we honor Ms. Dupre. So honorable board members, members of cabinet, I invite you to join us and come together to honor the staple in our community. Today, we say gracias, maestro Dupre. Thank you for your 44 years of service. But most importantly, thank you for the impact that your love, that your teachings and passion has had and will continue to have in our community. As a matter of fact, a few of your, your current students and maybe former students are here. I see Mr. Ben Asher there. There's someone in the back over there as well, and Marley, of course. Uh, Ms. Dupre, we wish you the best of luck in your retirement. However, something tells me you will continue to bless us with your presence in different capacities. Feliz es, maestra, and thank you for your commitment, your dedication to Fallbrook. For our second retiree, uh, you know, we also, I'm gonna yield my, my time to Ms. Mrs. Blinko Martinez, but I just want to say just the, I started here in Fallbrook in 2017, and one of the first observations I had was with Mrs. Mrs. Riley, and uh she teaches a mod severe class. And I was humbled by that visit and it changed how I see uh special education. So thank you, Mrs. Riley, for giving me the opportunity to learn from you, and uh we're gonna miss you tremendously.
And you'll find out in a second why he has given me his minutes here. Come on over. I'm a little nervous as well. This makes me happy and sad at the same time. Uh, good evening, governing board and cabinet, and distinguished friends and families here tonight. Um, I'm Stephanie Martinez. I'm the Special Ed Director here in Fallbrook, and I um met Ms. Riley about 19 years ago, about this exact time uh of the year when we were preparing for ESY, and she was my paraprofessional as I was the special ed teacher in a mod severe classroom. And as you can imagine how the story goes, she was teaching circles around me back then. And it wasn't shortly after that she um made it through and obtained her mod severe teaching credential and started at May Ellis for, uh, Fallbrook STEM, Fallbrook Street School in our time, um, and taught along. and taught alongside me as I was there for some time, and then over to May Ellis. And so it is just Fallbrook is extremely fortunate to have such an exemplary educator. She sets the bar high for how we run our mod severe programs. We send new teachers and struggling teachers to observe her strategies. If you have ever seen Ms. Riley at work in a classroom, you see magic happening. She truly is the autism whisperer. She knows exactly when to redirect a wayward child, when to provide a deep compression hug to an anxious child, when to console a frustrated child, when to persist with a resistant child, and when to have fun with all children. She has trained so many of us up in this room, along with hundreds of other paraprofessionals. I promise it's not three pages, it's just large print. I am terrified to think of what we'll do without her, as many of us are in this room tonight. Tara, as your friends and family gather around you tonight and celebrate your retirement, let me share a few things that they've shared with me. Ms. Gaddis, who's somewhere in this room as well, is a speech pathologist who's worked with Ms. Riley for years. The thing I enjoy most about Ms. Riley is the kids, that kids come first for her. She sees potential in every student she has, no matter how limited they may appear. Her master's degree is in behavior, and she has a magical way of being firm and loving and knowing when to push and when to back off and allowing children to feel safe where they are, wherever their boundaries are. I have watched her take a new kindergarten student who is tantruming every day to a student who can sit through a thirty-minute circle time, participating and enjoying it. I've watched her teach a nonverbal student to read when others would say there was no way to measure it, but she figured it out. She peered right into their brain and realized there was so much more going on. Ms. Norton, who's your longtime paraprofessional, shared this. I started with Ms. Riley fifteen years ago. It was a learning experience for both of us. With Tara's knowledge, experience, and hard work, dedication, and patience, we are all, we were able to help our students consistently achieve their goals. Although she is retiring, she will forever be an inspiration, an inspirational figure in my life. And Ms. Jeminer, I think, might be here as well, longtime colleague and fellow special ed teacher. Ms. Riley was always a team member at FSA, offering support whenever she could. My first year of teaching, she welcomed me into her room for a week so I could complete a course for my credential. When my classroom was back in the back corner near hers, she always made me laugh because she would climb the railing to get to the campus faster. If you know Fallbrook STEM, you know which railing we're talking about. Ending up, because she, Mandy eventually ended up copying her to get to staff meetings on time. Though we can't even begin to imagine doing this work without you, we do know that you have left a positive lasting impact on the lives of so many children and families, as well as the many paraprofessionals and staff you have worked alongside. We celebrate you and your retirement today.
Wait, we've got some more flowers.
All right. Good evening again, board and Mrs. Martin and cabinet. I'm Brian Frost, the principal at Mary Fay Pendleton, and I'm here tonight with Shirley Mordan, one of our retirees. And the time has gone fast, and here we are. I wanted to tell a quick story, just, you know, I think it'll resonate with all of our retirees. I have a cousin who's near and dear to me, who's a nurse. And she worked in emergency medicine and an O B after that. And she was such a fantastic nurse, she was approached to become a teacher at Humboldt in the School of Nursing, and she did it for a year and quickly bowed out after that one year and went back to the hospital and working with patients directly. And I always asked her why, you know, why, why did that happen? And the thing that she couldn't get over was in nursing hands-on, there was an immediacy to it. And you apply a medication, inject a medication, and you get results right then and there. And she was feeling in education, it was just a process that went on and on, and the results came with time and fruition. And that makes me think of Shirley with all the students that she's impacted over the years. I started with Shirley at Potter Junior High, and she was teaching language arts to seventh grade. An amazing teacher at the time, she collaborated really closely with her team. They always developed these strong lessons. She was in there working hard every day. But she also focused on the students and the whole child and kind of making the most out of her time with those kids to impact them at their core and in their souls. We both wound up at Mary Fay Pendleton several years later, and she was teaching sixth-grade language arts at that point and doing a wonderful job and sprinkling in some social studies with that. And I approached her with a challenge, which was to shift gears and teach second grade. And this was a person who had done career middle school. And as you know, kind of the, I taught middle school and high school. It's hard to shift those gears, and it can be frightening to work with the little ones sometimes if you haven't done it before. But she gladly accepted that and and has been working with second grade ever since, a strong collaborator with her team. And again, not just focused on all of the critical standards and the work that goes into making sure those students are ready for their next year, reading or learning to read, and she makes that shift over to reading to learn for them. But also that developing the whole child. This year, she has what we like to call a spirited class. And it's that in preschool, they went through the COVID shutdown, and then in kindergarten, they were in hybrid learning and sometimes shut down, sometime online, and slowly getting them back throughout the years, but really teaching them to socialize and get along well with each other. And I can't think of a better person to have done that for them and impacted their lives. And I know that you're gonna find people over the years who come up to you and say that they had you in a classroom and that you changed their life or impacted them in some super meaningful way. So congratulations on your retirement. We'll keep working on recruiting her daughter, who's also a teacher. And I don't know what we're gonna do next year.
All right, good evening. Board members, Mrs. Martin, members of the audience. We have some people making their way up. So first, we're gonna recognize and honor the career of Daniel Zallas or Danny, right? Mr. Danny, for his thirty-two years of service. As a night custodian here in Fallbrook, and Mr. Steve Carr is gonna take over the mic here. But let me tell you, I've known, I've known this man in many different capacities while working at Frazier. And I can just tell you, the teachers and the staff adore him, and the conversations we have about the weather are amazing. You should be no weather forecaster, Mrs. Arias knows. And so I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Carr.
Good evening. My name is Steve Carr. I'm the custodial supervisor. And we have Danny Rizolos standing here. Danny first started in nineteen ninety-two as a sub in the grounds and custody department. And then in nineteen ninety-eight, he was hired as a part-time custodian and has spent the last twenty-five years working for the district. Danny first worked at Fallbrook Street School in May Ellis, and then in nineteen ninety-nine, he transferred to William Mates Frazier when it first opened. So he's spent the last twenty-four years working at the same school. Danny is a very dedicated employee and F U E S D, along with his coworkers, and we'll miss him along with his dedication. Danny, on behalf of F U S D and the facilities department, I'd like to thank you for your dedication and your thirty-two years of service. During COVID, Danny, it was great to have an employee like Danny. He's quick. Anyone that knows Danny fast, he gets things done. So we had to disinfect every night, and Danny had no problem getting that done. So I'd like to thank him for making my job easier during COVID.
All right, so Mrs. Wheeler is making her way up here, and so we are proud to be here to recognize and honor the career of Dan Wheeler for her thirty-seven years of service here in Fallbrook. A little history, I'll take you back in time a little bit. Dan began her career in nineteen eighty-six at La Paloma as a noon duty supervisor when Mike Choat was the principal and her very own son started kindergarten. In nineteen eighty-nine, she moved to May Ellis and served as a librarian at that school site for twenty years. And the two thousand nine, two thousand ten school year, she was nominated as the employee of the year for May Ellis. And the two thousand ten, two thousand eleven school year, Dan then transferred to Frazier and has been at our school site since then. During that same school year, Dan was nominated as the employee of the year at Frazier and also received the honor of being nominated as district employee of the year as well. Amazing, right? So since nineteen ninety-eight, Dan has also worked as part of the summer cleaning crew, as well as part of the paint crew up and justice to like a few years ago. So definitely wears many different hats, right, Dan? So here's a few comments that your colleagues have shared about you. Dan has been a great librarian at Frazier for many years. I've always appreciated that she takes the time to purchase books that she knows students will enjoy. She is so thoughtful and will be missed. Dan is always open to purchasing book suggestions for my English learner students, especially that are bilingual. She often surprises me with purchasing more than I could have ever asked for. Dan has certainly made her mark as a librarian here at Frazier. Thank you for all of the books she has donated over the years and all of the hard work she has putting into keeping our library organized and accessible for all students. The students love going to the library because of you, and we will miss you. I wanted to take the time before I wrap up just to share a photo of Dan back in the day. As the bear. I had to just share this with her, you know, like we wear many hats, right? And so that was just a picture of her. I also wanted to share, because I had to bring books, right? Had to bring the books. And so these are, Dan came and shared with these with me the other day last week. And she said, Mrs. Rainey, I want to dedicate these to the library. These are gonna be my keepsake and wrote in there for them. But she wanted to dedicate this one, and she kind of gave me a summary, and we read them together. This one reminds her of her mom because of the bird. And then these two kind of go together. And so she's gonna dedicate these to our Frazier library as her keepsakes. And so I just. For now, all the kids will get to read. So Dan, your Frazier family will miss your love of reading and your passion for bringing books into our students' lives. Thank you for positively contributing to the climate and culture at Frazier. Thank you for being an advocate for students and all that you've done to nurture reading during that thirty-seven years of service in Fallbrook. So congratulations and happy retirement.
Okay, Dr. McCray, and board, that concludes our ceremony now. I believe we're gonna, we have lots of food outside and beverages for anyone who would like to have that when they depart here this evening. Thank you so much.
Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and take a five-minute recess so people who would like to leave and help themselves to food may do so. Thank you so much for attending and congratulations to all the teachers of the year, employees of the year, and their retirees of the year.
Okay, we'll call the meeting back into session at 6:37. We are now on to number five, the approval of the minutes of the April 17th, 2023 regular board meeting. It is recommended the governing board approve the minutes of the April 17th, 2023 regular meeting. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. Call for the vote, Ms. Sebald. Hi. Ms. Lindine.
Hi.
Mr. Pivella.
Hi.
Ms. McBride.
Hi.
And I as well, so the motion passes. The minutes are approved. That moves us to the community relations section. The hearing session, this is the portion of our meeting designated for comments from the public about matters not on the agenda but within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. Should individuals wish to comment on items on the present agenda, they may do so during this portion of the meeting or at the time the item is considered by the board. Comments are limited to three minutes with a maximum of 20 minutes allocated for a particular item or topic. While the Brown Act allows the board to hear issues within its jurisdiction from the public that are not on the agenda, it only allows the board to respond in a very limited manner such as providing direction to staff. If the board were to have more than this type of brief discussion on an item not on the agenda, it could be a violation of the Brown Act's rules for posting the agenda. To address the governing board, please submit to the clerk of the board a completed speaker card prior to the start of the open session portion of the meeting. Mr. Pivella, I know we do have some cards this evening.
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
And we'll start with KB Gressit.
Hearing session. Hi. I want to thank you all for the opportunity to address you this evening. I'm Kit Bacon Gressit, a parent of a long ago May Ellis student, a Latina. And for added context, I developed a writing and critical thinking curriculum for Via Cito School out in Rainbow for eighth graders. And I've taught it as a volunteer for the last 11 years. The eighth grade teacher whom I adore is graduating next year, so will be my last year as well. But, but, I also lecture at Cal State San Marcos. Since moving to Fallbrook decades ago, we've witnessed the growth and development of sometimes award-winning elementary school district, a community of schools for which we've been grateful and really proud. The foundation for the success was dedicated teachers and staff, involved parents representing a wonderfully diverse community, and a board of trustees who trusted their superintendent, trustees who honored what it takes to lead a challenging district such as ours. They were trustees who indeed insisted on a professional administrator who possessed the necessary degrees, years of administrative experience, and wisdom. The wisdom to inspire faculty and staff, to oversee the management and development of a substantive budget, and to embrace a community of diverse students and families who deserve the leadership of a highly skilled, highly professional superintendent. I've heard rumors that some on this board of trustees do not understand what it takes to be a professional, successful superintendent, that some do not honor the community's input on this. I've heard rumors that some of you all made it onto this board with personal ideologies and agendas that might hinder your collective ability to make well-informed, objective decisions that benefit our entire multicultural community. I really hope these rumors are not true. I hope for our kiddos, for our village, for our future, that if you came to this board not understanding what the majority of our community needs and wants in a superintendent, that you will listen with open hearts and minds to the experts who do know, that you will learn, that you will honor the professionals and the professional process, that you will hire our next wise and wonderful professional superintendent. It is what the majority of Fallbrook community wants. And we're pretty darn determined to get it. Thanks again for the opportunity to speak this evening.
Thank you, board members, administration, staff, and community members. I want to thank you for the in-depth discussion held at the last board meeting regarding the board president traveling to Washington DC for a conference with all expenses paid, including her salary. As I stated in my public comment, that is entirely inappropriate. And while I still think sending a new board member who has yet to visit a single school site to meet with staff and administrators or students and has no experience on what to advocate for regarding our district, to travel without the superintendent or other cabinet member attending as well that could give some of that insight, it is not a good use of district funds. But at least you all had a good discussion and for that I thank you. However, it was pointed out that because this is an out-of-state conference, it had to come before the board for approval. My concern that it is if such a future trip were to present itself, say to Sacramento, the same sort of request could be made with all expenses and salary and benefits paid to Hemet or any other employer. And it wouldn't be needed to come to the board for approval. Obviously, this has never been done before, nor has it come to the board before this past meeting. And though we have had people serving as trustees who have had full-time jobs, this has not been an issue before. These elected positions are, serving as trustees are not full-time jobs. These are elected positions that are not paid positions. The district should not be paying for any missed workdays, benefits, et cetera, for any board member to attend any optional meeting or even a required meeting. Since it apparently hasn't been addressed before, I think a new board policy needs to be in place to eliminate this sort of expense to include any out-of-town meetings, be they out of state or not, or conference, or even a local meeting. As Mrs. Liebes pointed out at the last meeting, when she served on the board and wanted to go to a conference, she was advised that she would have to pay her own expenses. While I think that is also inappropriate, as travel meals, et cetera, should be reimbursed for something that will benefit our district, every conference and meeting should come before this board for approval to make sure that costs and benefits are discussed. Thank you.
We have Julia Worldy.
Hi, thank you. I'm not used to public speaking, but Christopher Clements asked if I would speak in his behalf. And I am, my family has been in this town since 1960. My father taught in this district from 1960 to 1990. The first two years actually in this building while they were building Potter. And I worked at Carl's Bed High myself 32 years. My mom worked in the learning lab at May Ellis and then preschool where she would refer kids that needed special ed help. And so I come from a family of educators and I have known Christopher's family since, well, I guess since my earliest memories because his father was the pharmacist in Fallbrook, his grandfather. And his father went to high school with me. And my concern too, kind of similar to the previous lady about finances, I think is very important. I have been told that the previous superintendent was paid $400,000. And I don't think that's an appropriate pay when most of the people in this town don't make anywhere near that amount of money. I think it's highly inappropriate. And I think it's, I think even somebody that, I think Christopher, he's from this community, third generation, he's centered around children, the community. I think he would be a competent superintendent without you having to pay a fortune or having to pay a company to find somebody. I think he should be given a chance. And I just, that's why I'm here. I feel like the district needs to save money. I think, I think $400,000 a year is obscene, 100%. And I'm sure most people in here agree with me. And I think, I think you need to use any available monies and there may be shortages. I've heard today that the state of California is going to be short money. So we need to think better about how we're supporting the classrooms, the teachers, and the needs of the kids. I myself, I'm also on the Child's Services Committee with the Fallbrook Chamber of Commerce. And I also worked with some English learner, Gotham Island children at my church during the closed downs at the schools. And it was very traumatic, what they were going through. I was very concerned at the lack of depth on that lessons on their computers for the junior hires and the tears of the little ones because they were feeling so discouraged. Their computers did not work at home for their classes in their homes that they had to live in. I mean, I'm just telling you what I saw. And I worked with those children. So I'm still kind of, even though I'm retired from the high school because I had to take care of my dad when he went blind, I'm still very much interested in what's going on in schools. Okay, that's me.
We have Stephanie Gaddis.
This will make more sense when Sarah Bishop was supposed to be for me, but that's okay. I'll go first. Dr. McRae, members of the board and guests, my name is Stephanie Gaddis and I'm a speech-language pathologist. We call ourselves SLPs for 14 years, the past 12 of which have been at Fallbrook Union Elementary School District. My children attended May Ellis, La Paloma, Potter Junior High, and they graduated from Fallbrook High School. I've been a resident of Fallbrook since 2005 and I vote in District Four. Thank you for your time and attention to our issue. I'm going to thank Sarah in advance for taking initiative. She's been working on this all year long to advocate for our field and our department. I'd like to acknowledge the work our Classified Employees Union and our Human Resources Department have devoted to this issue already and would like to bring to the board's attention that more needs to be done. I'm talking about speech-language pathology assistance. We call them SLPAs. Our most veteran SLPA has been with the district since 1986 and became a licensed SLPA in 1998. Our district has had SLPAs since the job was invented. Our Mary Rodriguez, who is here today, holds license number 67. New SLPAs hold license numbers in the 7000s. Their job description has not changed since 1998 and currently it is inaccurate and it does not currently reflect what they do. Currently, a licensed SLPA must have an associate's degree plus 80 hours field experience or a bachelor's degree in speech-language pathology. They must also attend continuing education in order to maintain their license. No other special ed assistants require that much education or training. Two of our current SLPAs will be retiring in the near future, which breaks my heart, but it's a reality. And the district needs to acknowledge that future hires will need a clear job description and salary offer that reflects this job description and the duties that they perform. The speech-language pathology field is highly impacted and there's a shortage of qualified employees. If we are not competitive, we'll not be able to attract and retain quality candidates. If USD needs to stay competitive surrounding districts for a few reasons, Fallbrook is remote. It's a long drive to get to the center of town and to get on base. Fallbrook's population has challenging needs. We have a high bilingual population as well as growing trilingual population. Currently, we pay contract agencies to staff our openings. These agencies are paying their employees a higher hourly wage than we are. However, these agencies charge the district an even higher hourly wage. Increasing pay to our district-employed SLPAs, combined with their benefits, will still be less than what the district pays to the contract agencies. The advantage of having in-house employees is that our employees will be loyal to our district, to our schools, and our students. They share community identity with our students and families and better understand our students and their unique needs and to provide consistency and stability of service for our students. We understand that the Human Resources Department will be comparing job descriptions with other districts on Tuesday. And hopefully, we will be updating ours to a more accurately reflect what SLPAs actually do. Do I have to stop now? Okay, thank you.
Next, we have Alejandra Ordones.
Hey, good evening, Dr. McCray, members of the board and guests. My name is Alejandra Ordones. I would like to start by thanking the board for their time and listening to our concerns. I would also like to extend my sincere appreciation to Mr. Morris and the Reclassification Committee for carefully reviewing my reclassification request, even though it was ultimately denied. I am a Fallbrook resident and have been an employee of Fallbrook Union Elementary School District since 2015. I began as a special education program assistant at the Mike Choate Center. I continued to work at the Mike Choate Center while I pursued my bachelor's degree in speech-language pathology at Cal State San Marcos. I graduated in 2020, then I completed my post-bac program to become a SLPA. I completed 100 hours of clinical placement and four post-bac units to obtain my SLPA license in California. At that time, a position opened for a SLPA here in the district, so I happily applied. I am just completing my first year as a SLPA here in Fallbrook. I really do love my job and all of the children and staff I work with. My wish is to be able to continue to work in this community, to continue to strengthen our speech team, and to continue to help our students meet their speech and communication goals. However, I have realized that I can be paid a more equitable and more appropriate rate in surrounding school districts. I am here today to advocate for appropriate and equitable pay for SLPAs. I believe that we are not being compensated I believe that we are not being compensated fairly for the important work we do to help students meet their speech and communication goals. I'm not asking for a raise, but rather for a more equitable and appropriate rate of pay for our profession so that we can continue to work and contribute to our community. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter.
Next, we have Sandra Porres. You're in need of section B, okay. Need that for that agenda item. And Anna Hernandez. Sure, I think we have nineteen people. And up for that item. Uh, besides that, um, that's it for public hearing. We have for the superintendent item, we'll bring those up when that comes up. I don't see. Double check, what's your name? Did you call that name? Wait, I called Sarah Bishop. Okay, go ahead. Yeah, it's here. Sorry about that.
Dr. McRae, members of the board and distinguished guests, my name's Sarah Bishop. I'm a speech language pathologist. We abbreviate SLP. I've been an SLP for eleven years, which nine, past nine, have been with Fallbrook Union Elementary School District. And let me begin by thanking Dr. McRae and the board for their continued dedication to our students and our speech department and the work that you've done this year to support us. I'd also like to express our appreciation for the board's approval of therapy dogs on campuses, which has benefited the practice of one of our speech language pathologists and the students she serves. So I'm seeking your assistance in achieving fair compensation for speech language pathology assistance or SLPAs. Uh, despite my efforts over the past school year, we have yet to see progress in this area and I'm hoping that you can help us find a solution to ensure equitable pay for our SLPAs. And I'm asking that you consider these three main points. One, accurate classification and titling of our SLPAs. Two, equitable pay for our SLPAs. And three, considering the extra costs incurred by the district for hiring contract agencies because we can't fill internally because the pay is too low. When examining compensation offered to SLPAs in comparable districts, it is clear that Fallbrook is lagging behind. Regrettably, our starting rate is twenty-three dollars eighty-nine cents, which far, falls far below the rates offered by Lemon Grove, which pays twenty-eight dollars thirty-three cents and National, which pays twenty-seven dollars twenty-nine cents. And in fact, private contract companies are known to offer brand new SLPAs rates of thirty-four to thirty-six dollars per hour. It is evident that we must improve our compensation practices in order to attract and retain talented SLPAs. Furthermore, there's currently no job description on file for SLPAs and there hasn't been one on file for years. Without a proper job description, the current placement on the salary schedule is questionable and lacks integrity. And I'm just wondering if the district could consider initiating a memorandum of understanding, an MOU, to address this issue of SLPA pay immediately. I've been informed that we cannot change the pay at this time and we must wait for CSEA to bring it up to negotiations for the upcoming school year. However, I did request for CSEA to negotiate SLPA pay this, the start of this year, but unfortunately it was not addressed. And it's concerning that our SLPAs will have to wait another year for equitable pay. I implore the district to take action to find a way to properly classify and compensate our SLPAs. They've been overlooked for far too long and it's time for us to show them the respect and value they deserve. I'm speaking today in the hope that someone with the power or influence to affect change will hear my message and take action. While I have previously raised this issue with district administrators and I have assisted SLPAs with their reclassification paperwork, unfortunately, their pay has yet to be corrected. So I'm just not sure what to do next and I really value and care the work that my, that our SLPAs do for our students. So it's essential to continue to push for change and that's why I'm here. And I hope that the district can take the necessary steps to help address this issue. And so be on behalf of our team, we express our appreciation for your time and we thank you again for your dedication to the success of our students.
Now we're done with this.
Thank you. Alright, so now we'll have reports from the board. Ms. McRae, would you like to start for us with your name?
First, I'd like to, um, give thanks, um, and congratulations to, if anybody is still here from that, um, the teachers and the staff that got their awards and the retired people. And I want to thank you for, uh, your commitment and devotion to our, or to the, our students. Thank you very much. Um, then, um, I went to, this was my first time. I, I didn't even know there was such a wonderful, um, festival, the avocado festival. And, um, I heard someone say, and I said, that's exactly right, that it was like, uh, it was like a farmer's market on steroids. And I thought, yes, that's how I would describe it. It was, um, I literally, I'm always like being careful how much I spend. I wasn't very careful this time. There were so many good things to buy and plus they went to a good, good cost. Um, so that was, uh, pretty much it.
Ms. Favela.
Uh, likewise, uh, congratulations to all the teachers that got, were well recognized, well deserved, um. You know, having kids in the district when, when I can pick up my kids from school volume in the morning, in the morning, the two in the afternoon. And they can tell me day after day that they had a great day. I mean, that's awesome. That's awesome. And so I really want to extend my appreciation to all our teachers and and, um, even a little bit emotional for our teachers that are retiring. Um, very, I'm also very lucky that my daughter's in this Avila's class. So just, I'm really proud of this district. Especially the teachers. I mean, can't express enough my, my appreciation. So thank you. Um, so, uh, besides that, I did have a chance to attend the, uh, Don Dornan Games. I think, what year are we? Fifty-fifth year, wow. Fifty-fifth year. Um, I remember my, my old, one of my older brothers, uh, when he participated and I remember seeing those photos and it's just a beautiful tradition that we have in this town and really glad that, you know, to see the school district head that up. So again, congratulations. So all the staff, all the teachers that pulled it off was amazing event, very well coordinated. And, um, the children were just loving, having a blast, loved to see that athleticism on display. Um, I was able to, uh, give out some of the other awards. So I was honored to be a part of that. So thank you all again. That's it for my report.
Yes, um, I, I think you're going to hear this echoed all the way down the line. Um, what makes this district so amazing? And the eight hundred people who work in this district in every job that is filled. Because every job is important to having the whole thing work. So for any of you who are here in this room, who work for us in any capacity, we are so grateful for your contribution to the success of our kids and you know, hearing about our teachers and our staff getting the awards. Um, they are amazing, but so are a lot of other people, um, in this room. And so, thank you. Um, the Don Dornan Games are my favorite thing ever. I don't know if you've been to them. But, and I don't know how many school districts do anything like the Don Dornan Games, but I think it's phenomenal. I've actually been to an Olympics, uh, and, uh, this reminded me of the best of Olympics. It was kids being able to participate in all kinds of things. You know, there's the running, which I could never do. I'd be the last one out the gate, you know, but they had tug of war. There are all sorts of ways in which kids could be part of a team or excel. It is such an incredibly complicated day. There are so many moving parts and that's just the tip of the iceberg because before that it's what the principals and assistant principals and P teachers and volunteers are doing to help the kids get ready. Um, so those fourth, fifth and sixth graders were amazing. I thought the volunteers were incredible, um, kudos especially to the event organizers. Um, and, uh, I just think this is another thing that shows how different we are and how incredible we are. So congratulations to all of you as well.
I just want to say thank you to the teachers and the employees of the year and their retirements. I'd hope they have a happy fun time and we thank you for all the years that you have dedicated to our kids. And I am going to also say, um, the avocado festival, amazing. It's the, 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 um, people that in the community that shows up for it was totally amazing. I mean, it was a lot of fun. Also, the arts in the park, we went to that yesterday. That was another amazing time and stuff that, the arts and crafts that they came up with for the kids just totally amazing, just amazing. It was a good time.
Thank you. And in the interest of time, I'll, I'll echo the same sentiments. Congratulations to everyone. And I also attended the Dornan Games and I want to specifically thank Mr. Favela for helping me with the awards. I was interested in watching the tug of war. That was those kids, when they said go, okay, it was, yeah. So, so thank you so much, Mr. Favela. So, yeah, so thank you, Mr. Favela. Thank you. And now we're going to move on to reports for our, from our interim superintendent, Mrs. Martin.
Yes, um, you know, after being here for nineteen years, I won't say take for granted, but some of these things that others that are new to the district find is so unique and special. We've been doing it for a really long time and been doing a really good job at it. And it's part of what does make this district unique and this community unique and part of why the drive when I first started here was twenty minutes and is now, you know, tripled, but it's still well worth it because of what this community offers, what the district offers. So, um, some of the things that we, we do that, we do this, we do that, we do. We do a lot. Um, and I don't mean the we here, I mean, the we that's out there as well. I just wanted to share with you CASP testing, the state testing. It's that time of year amongst many other things that are going on right now. And we really wanted to try and rebrand. You know, one thing that I've learned after being here this long and in this, uh, new role is that there's a lot of great things that happens and we just need to do a better job of showcasing it. And for our students, the state tests, while they can be a great source of anxiety for some kids and some parents and some principals and teachers and everybody here. Um, I really, I'm truly convinced in my heart of hearts, I see it for someone with my son, that these kids, uh, forget the pandemic, forget any of that. These are amazing kids with amazing teachers doing amazing things. And I think they're going to shine. I think it's the opportunity to shine. So we wanted to, um, take a little different approach. And that is, don't look at this as, oh my goodness, it's testing and it's a, look at it as your time to show everybody what you can do. And just a shift in the mindset because I believe that they can do it. I've seen it. I've seen the growth in my son. So having said all that, uh, we put together a little video, um, that was part of something that some of you may have seen if your parents, some of you may have seen if your employees. But I just wanted to share it. These not only am I proud of the message, I'm proud of the team and the collaboration because you'll see in this video. It's not just the teachers, the principals, that it's, goes across the district with who's in it and who put it together. And I think it just kind of isn't a really good example of how we work together. So, cue the video.
CASP testing is almost here. Are you ready to rock the test?
Make sure to start your day with a healthy breakfast.
Make sure you get to school with plenty of time.
Make sure to get plenty of rest before your test day.
Don't forget to practice your growth mindset this week.
Together, let's rock the test.
That's my report. Alright, well now move to action contract. Franz Law Group for purposes of social media litigation. It is recommended the governing board approve the legal services contract with Franz Law Group for purposes of social media litigation. Do I have a motion?
You have speakers.
Oh, we have speakers. Okay, thank you.
Speak before the whole section or specific to the item?
Um, before, before the item.
For the item.
If there's anyone that wanted to speak about this. What operations, item one.
Three point two, yeah. Actually, there was one for social media, yeah.
My comments are really more wanting information. Um, I'm aware that there are many districts across the country who are engaging and uniting in this particular lawsuit against the media companies. Even Tulsa Public Schools where I'm from. I mean, it's nationwide. Uh, the Franz Law Group, I looked them up online and the outstanding litigation that they tout on their website has to do with damages from fire against SDG and E. There was nothing on there about any kind of school or media or anything like that. Plus, with so many districts uniting to sue, uh, sue these media companies. You know, I'm wondering, what is a local company going to do? I mean, there are, do you have to have an attorney? A law, a law representative in your district to participate in a national lawsuit? I mean, there are going to be gazillions of attorneys from all over the country working on this. I mean, what is the Franz people going to do? The other thing, um, they will, they will get twenty-five percent of any award and I hope it's in my lifetime because this is going to drag on forever. But the district will pay all their expenses. Now you realize that these companies are all over the country. You can imagine the travel expenses, all that will be deducted from the award if we get one. If we don't get an award, if it's dismissed, the district doesn't pay anything. But you can imagine all the expenses that they're going to be incurred. So if there is an award, the district pays all that first. Then the attorney, the Franz company gets twenty-five percent. So it just sounds like I think they're kind of, they're kind of gambling that this is going to be a real big deal for their, their firm, but I'm just wondering, what are they going to do? I mean, they're going to get twenty-five percent plus all the expenses for this contract. What are they going to do? I mean, do we have to have an attorney from this area? Can we just join with other districts who are already suing? I, I mean, I just sort of wondered how that works.
The one that's just for board operations, wasn't specific to an item. That's Tara Jenkins.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Tara Jenkins for Board Operations.
Okay. Is this the superintendent search?
There are three items on, under Board Operations.
Okay, um.
From you're speaking to.
Uh, I'll do the superintendent search so I can come back if that's not where you're at yet. I'm not doing the legal stuff. Sandra did a great job at that.
Alright, so do I have a motion going back to the contract for Franz Law Group?
To approve.
Thank you. Do a second. Do I have a second?
I can't be a second.
Okay, you could recuse yourself.
I have a family member who works for that law firm, so I have to recuse myself. Not just the non-stim.
I may say I'm not going to second because there's some information that she brought up that, um, that needs to be addressed on the percentage. Now, I believe needs to be addressed on the percentage.
We can do that as part of the discussion.
Second, so we can discuss it.
Oh, okay. And then I'll second. Thank you.
Alright, discussion.
Okay, so what I understand, and I don't know how much I can allow to say this about the percentage.
Well, it's in the contract, which is part of the board.
Well, it's in the contract, which is part of the board agenda. So that's, it's public information. What I'll tell you is the percentage of twenty-five percent is less than what typically an attorney would charge, which is in the thirty, thirty-three percent range. Um, this is something that is occurring probably nationwide. I've been watching it throughout the state here and in San Diego County. And there are several law firms that probably will, um, come into play here. This is not a class action lawsuit. So this isn't where we all can go in. And there's going to be one lawsuit on behalf of all the districts with the settlement. This is what is described as a mass action lawsuit in which we all have to secure our own attorney, um, and go through the process. Um, in, in response to just some of the questions about what is the Franz Law Group would do? And I don't, we, I've never worked with them, so I couldn't tell you, uh, anything about them one way or the other. Uh, only that the county office of education is, uh, been working with that group and they vet them pretty well. Um, what, what they will do is do the work and the research on behalf of the districts. So we're not attorneys. I would never claim to be. But in order to participate, we, um, need to have somebody that can file, you know, a suit on our behalf. What's more likely to happen is that there would be, um, a settlement is often the case. And, um, where district, I, I think we talked about the Juul, J U U L settlement, the vaping. Um, it was similar and, and this is how, this is the way because school districts have incurred costs that, um, were claiming are attributed directly to social media in the way of dealing with our students' anxiety, depression, and therefore we need to provide more resources than we would typically have to had that not been the case. So it's not a, a suit against social media or banning social media. It's more of how is social media targeting and using, um, their algorithms, their methods, their ways to, to focus on our kids and what they see. Um, this isn't about parents and need to do a better job of parenting or screen time. This is truly about when there is whatever screen time, screen time allowed, how the social media companies are working to, um, quite frankly, make money. So again, it, there's no cost upfront. I don't know, I couldn't predict long-term what's going to happen. But if we don't participate, which we don't have to, then when there are other, you know, when there is a settlement, we won't be entitled to anything. And as I hear continually, and you know me, I'm always looking to maximize the district's revenues. So if there's no upfront costs and the only thing that's involved immediately is some work from our student services department to gather the data that's requested, then I think it's well worth it, which is why we've recommended this. However, it's up to the board because it is entering into potential litigation on behalf of the district.
So is, could the other question be answered for, for them about, um, what is it? What was it, uh? Can, do, do we have to go through what would happen? So just, I just want those questions answered for the public. What would happen if we didn't? How, would be, would there be another way to do this without going through France law?
Um, certainly could use a different law firm. I would tell you, I wouldn't recommend that any of us or any of the eight hundred people tried to file this on our own. So if it wasn't the Franz Law Group, it would be another law firm. Um, the Franz Law Group has done a lot of work, preliminary work already on this. And as we discussed, um, you know, listen, if they didn't think there was something they were going, could win, I don't think they would be pursuing it, quite frankly, and to be out until there was some kind of settlement and then taking twenty-five percent. So again, having said that, we don't, we don't have to use this law firm. But we would need some law firm to file on our behalf. And this is the law firm that's, um, to our knowledge, the most familiar with what's happening. We have legal counsel. However, they're not familiar with this and I certainly wouldn't recommend that we go through the legal counsel we use for negotiations or, you know, business deals, um, because they're just not familiar with, with the merits of this case.
Ms. Martin, did the law firm provide us with the names of other districts that have signed on to?
Yes, and I shared that with the board. I emailed it, um, to you. There were, you know, when I misspeak, but to date in California, there were probably fifteen to twenty school districts that have already signed on, agreed, just in California, um, for this and with more coming.
I think was LA Unified, one of them?
I don't recall, to be honest with you.
Oceanside and Corona were two of the.
Can you read some of them out for us?
Sure, there's, uh, Virgo Springs, um, Raleigh, Burbank, Castro Valley, Compton, USD, Coronado, USD, Monte City, Glendale, Glen, La Cañada, Nuss, Yurgenis, Mountain Empire, National San Diego, Oceanside, San Marcos, Santa Monde Valley, Santa Rosa City Schools, Pasadena, Silver Springs, Torrance and Warner.
And I believe there were three other districts that weren't on that list that we were sent the, um, information that they had.
Alhambra, Escondido. San, and San Grito.
If we were, just to answer your question, if we were to hire a firm to do this, the way that would work is we'd actually have to pay their hourly rate, the whole process. Um, when there's either a class action or a mass action suit, it's typically done so that none of the litigants, people who are involved in the case pay anything upfront. So this is kind of standard and how it happens. And Mrs. Martin is right, they can drag out. Um, but there is no cost to us for being part of it.
Yeah, I understand. I just want their questions answered. Which ones? Well, the same ones that I asked were the questions that were, were asked by, you know, the question that was asked.
About the rate? About the twenty?
The percentage and the, the two questions I asked were the ones that were already asked, right? I just want the answers so that the public gets to hear the answers to those things. So that then we can make a decision, um, with the information so that they feel comfortable or at least have the information like, like, um, Mrs. Stemo said earlier, she was just happy to, that we discussed it. So I want, I, that's what I wanted to do was have a discussion so that they get, uh, some information.
Do we have the information that was asked for?
Well, I think she answered it.
Okay, so we do have, okay. That's what I thought, that we had it, okay.
What are the other expenses that they were talking about?
Well, I don't want to read any minds, but, uh, uh, tell you this, um, that's probably pretty much standard contract language that if there was some exorbitant request or requirement that our district alone had for them to do, that they would charge us. So they're looking at this as, um, you know, as already working with other school districts and kind of knowing the attention they need to get, estimating how long it would kind of take them. But if for some reason we just had this request that was, you know, uh, unlike any other, and we wanted them to come and speak here for hours and have workshops and whatever, they're not going to do that. You know, we take it, they're going to want those expenses paid for. But as long as what we're doing is what they're, the, they're minimally asking us to do, there shouldn't be other than maybe like copying expenses or, you know, those, the standard expenses that are there. But we certainly, um, that's something that we definitely can find out more information on. I would just not want to miss an opportunity that we could get revenue to pay for some of the things we're already paying for. If that's the case, that's how I look at it. Um, you know, if, if we're getting a hundred dollars, but it's just somebody getting some data and we only end up with seventy-five dollars of that because someone's taking twenty-five dollars and doing all the work. That's better than zero.
And I think I, I remember reading about research that shows that how social media contributes to depression. Um, some of this information was suppressed by Instagram. So it's, it's in the public, it's known that, you know, what the effects are on, on young, young people in particular. I think you know, hold them accountable.
I'm trying to pull up, my computer is really slow. I'm trying to pull up the actual contract because I, I do think there was an answer to that. Good question about what's, what's included in the incidentals. It's in there somewhere. Can you, anybody find it in the contract? Oh, okay. So if you go down a little bit. Please keep going, it's recovering.
I have it here.
Oh, you do? Oh, good. Want to read some out for us? Uh, shared expenses. Um, in addition to paying legal fees, clients shall reimburse attorneys for all costs and expenses which include but are not limited to the following. Process server fees, fees fixed by law or assessed by courts or other agencies, court reporter fees, long distance telephone calls, messenger and other delivery fees, parking, investigation expenses, consultant fees, expert witness fees and other similar items incurred. And then they go on for a few and they say, uh, shared expenses. The client understands that attorneys may incur certain expenses that jointly benefit multiple clients excluding, including, for example, travel experts and copying. Client agrees that attorneys shall divide such expenses equally among such clients and deduct the portion of that from the client. So it's saying that if there are fifty clients involved in the mass action, then the expenses get divided.
As it, would it be possible to table this till, um, or would that affect not getting settlement? Would it, would it be too late if we didn't?
I don't believe that it would be too late. I don't think that there was a deadline yet. Um, so we can certainly table it. I would just need to know specifically what additional questions or information we could provide to help the board decide one way or another what they want to do. So that's all I would recommend. If you want to table it is then to just, um, provide the clear questions and/or information that you would like for us to get for you so that you could feel comfortable making a decision one way or the other.
So it had, so she just, the list of the majority of the things. Um, can we get something that gives us a little more detail about? Um, could it go over the, them getting twenty-five percent plus? That, is that a poss? Is that a possibility?
Ask the question again.
Would it, is it possible that they, or can they tell us if it, we could go over the, them getting more than the twenty-five percent with the, with the additional fees?
Which would include the expenses. Or the contract says, um, it shall like see twenty-five percent or thirty percent of the gross recovery, which would include the expenses. So maximum will be thirty percent.
Such is the standard. I mean, somebody was assuming somebody, that's usually what the attorney's saying.
Diane, does that help answer your question?
Yeah.
Do we have any further discussion on this item? Okay, so I'll call for the vote. Uh, Ms. Siboll.
Hi.
Ms. Ladin, you've recused yourself. Mr. Favella.
Hi.
Ms. McBride.
Hi.
And I vote as well, motion passive. Okay, we will move on to this information superintendent search update. Mr. Rich Thum, Travis Partner with Leadership Associates will give us an update to the board on the superintendent search.
But before that, you have speaker cards here.
All right. Okay, well, the topic is limited to twenty minutes, so.
One minute each person.
Yep, so one minute a person and.
We'll have one minute to speak. Standard, we have this many, uh, speakers. And we'll begin with, um, Diana Pink. So we have about eighteen, nineteen people signed up to speak. So when we have.
See, they can't hear you.
When we have this amount of cards, uh, we have to limit it for the, for one item, we have to limit it to twenty minutes. So that would mean we'd have to allow one minute per speaker. Yeah, just a linear winner. All right. Um, so we'll begin with Diana Pink. Is she present? Yes, we have, uh, Tana Rodarte.
Thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is Tana Rodarte and I'm a twelve-year resident of Fallbrook. I am the mother of five children and grandmother of five. Uh, my older children went to schools in Powell Unified School District where I worked for four years as a paraprofessional in ESL. And my daughter Chloe Corales, who many of you probably know as teachers, um, went to Fraser Potter and Fallbrook High School and just got into UCSD on Friday. Um, thank you. Um, the first clause in the Bill of Rights states, Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion. In eighteen oh two, Thomas Jefferson stated, when American people adopted the Establishment Clause, they built a wall separating church and state. Both he and James Madison felt support for a particular religion was improper for our country. It has been a accepted and legal norm that our public schools are non-religious. We are a county filled with immigrants from all parts of the world, many different religions that reflect many different people. Sorry.
Okay, no, we're not, we're not going to be giving time this evening and we're not going to be doing that as a feature, but we'll get back to that. So we'll continue with the comments with a minute apiece.
Sorry, all right, Letitia Maldonado.
First, let me start by saying, um, I protest the way this is being handled. We have had, we have had groups come here and talk way more than twenty minutes, way more than their three minutes. And if that's all I spend my one minute on protesting this, I want you to know that you're doing wrong. Okay? So first of all, let me just say, um, there are many people that are trying to usurp this process. Endorsing an unqualified candidate for you to hire is beyond any reasonable response. If they're willing to completely disrespect the process at this point, they surely don't have any respect for any other systems in place that we now have to serve our students. Mr. Clements and his team has already committed a breach of professional ethics according to the, uh, position description online. My comments to you today are to urge you to stick to the process. If the consultants do their job, uh, to match the fees that we're paying them and you follow the protocols and the processes, the most qualified candidates will emerge and you will have the finest to choose from. Anything outside that process will give us a deceptive and invalid result. On that same note, I still not heard from anyone regarding the addition of community panel to pre-interview the candidates. And again, what you're doing is wrong.
Uh, next we have Luis.
Luisi Hino, all right? All right, all right, good. All right, um, good evening, thank you. My name is Luisi Hino. I'm a longtime resident of this community. Actually, I was born and raised in Fallbrook here when the hospital was still here. I'm also a parent in this district. My son is a second grader, soon to be third grader. at May Ellis. And in my opinion, May Ellis is the most phenomenal school in this district and a model of what other schools in this district should look like. They serve a diverse um, group of students. As you all know, it's a bilingual, bilateral, and bicultural school. I am a lecturer at the Department of Sociology at CSU San Marcos, a PhD candidate in the Department of Sociology at UCR. And I'm here today as a parent, community member, and educator to provide the much-needed input regarding the superintendent search for our district. I don't come to these meetings as often as I should, but I do. I do appreciate you having it on Zoom where I can tune in and it's available for working parents. I think this process should be respected. It should be transparent and it should be open at all stages to members of the community. I also think that we should have a community interview panel where it's comprised of actual community members who live in this community, who have children who actually attend these schools. Thank you.
Next, we have, uh, Marin Pinnell.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Marin Pinnell. I'm from a family that has invested itself in the community since nineteen seventy, being raised on a macadamia nut ranch, which allowed me to be a part of the rural farming community of Fallbrook since I was born. My family has invested in education in Fallbrook. I went to school in Fallbrook. My mom taught first grade in Fallbrook. I teach at Fallbrook High School and I've been there for seventeen years. I'm currently the Science Department Chair. My husband is a teacher at Mary Fay and he's been there for five years. Our daughter is at May Ellis. She's in the Dual Immersion Program. She is becoming bilingual while excelling in math and reading and learning how to be a global citizen. Our community must have an education system. I, at the high school, have seen a superintendent process unfold. Everybody's involved, the students, the children, the staff. The whole community is involved in picking a star of an individual that will be the leader of our community that will keep us being an excellent school district in San Diego County. That's what we need.
We have Jennifer Montgomery.
Good evening. It's deeply concerning that community members who are once again not FUUSD families are pushing the idea that experience and expertise is somehow anathema to being a compassionate and effective educational advocate. You are hiring a CEO. The FUUSD is the largest employer in Fallbrook. They'll be required to oversee complex employment laws, special ed requirements, state and federal grants, contract negotiations. I'm a nice person with a good heart, but I would never walk into your middle school classroom, Dr. McCray, and think I could do a better job teaching than you do. I don't have your years of study and experience or the bravery to teach junior high children. Demanding an unqualified candidate be considered for a job in education shows an astounding lack of respect for the profession of education. We don't let people fly airplanes or perform surgery only on the basis of character and zip code or whether their parents were the town pharmacist. We value expertise, education, experience, and breadth of knowledge. Why should the leader of a school district be treated any differently? Your slogan when you ran for this job was "A Voice For Parents." So I ask you, which parents?
Next, we have Jennifer Jeffries.
Hi, Jennifer Jeffries. I was superintendent of this district, a proud superintendent in the nineties. Ten years, ten years I was here. I'm here to speak specifically to one qualification, but also to the process. You are going to rock this search if you let leadership associates help you. They know how to do this. They've done it thousands of times, totally, totally successfully. Use their guidance. They're here for you. They have wisdom. I want to speak directly to the requirement that the superintendent has experienced at district-level executive leadership position. This is a complex, complicated job. It is not for a rookie. The new superintendent must know the geography and the vocabulary of being a superintendent of a district this size with its complicated, very later-layered experience. Thank you.
We have Michael Lambert.
You can't give me his minute?
We have Kathy Lambert, next.
You can have my minute.
Yeah, this is unfair. And plus, when you take ten minutes to debate whether or not to table something and then we're shortened. Fine. My one sentence is, elected officials such as our board of mem- um, board members make a promise to the community to be transparent. A public process such as this hiring process is an example of transparency. We must all make sure that the board understands, respects, and follows the process fully, fairly, and openly, as well as must include time for parent and community leaders from Fallbrook, not anyplace else, as well as teachers and staff to meet the applicants or at least see their curriculum vitae. And it's just, I can't imagine the way you're handling this. I'm a former teacher underneath Jennifer Jeffries. I had three kids, went through the schools, graduated with PhDs from UC Californias and wanted bilingual teacher. Thank you. So I may have skin in the game more than you know, and I want our students to have the best possible education they can get.
Next, we have Judy Willis. We have Jane Doe Three. Jane Doe Three.
I'm trying to identify as Jane Doe One. Does that work?
Jane Doe Two, Jane Doe One.
And these people were not even here to pick up their cards. All of the Jane Does.
We were here pretty early.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, we were here quite early, yes. Uh huh. Anyway, my name is Gary Eichman, if you allow me to speak.
Your name is Jane Doe.
No, it's not.
Identify as Jane Doe. You can do that nowadays.
What is her name?
Who who is this lady? Uh, I'm, I'm, yeah, I, I, I think so. If you don't want me to speak, just let me know.
Doe Two.
Speak.
I apologize for the confusion. I was here at five forty-five thinking that was early enough. It evidently wasn't. Well, good for you. Yeah.
There's no name. Big mistake. You have to follow the news.
Is your name Jane Doe?
Yes, identify as Jane Doe. My name is Gary Eichman. If you don't want me to speak, I won't speak.
That's not the speaker then. So then he's not the speaker.
I'm, I'm here to speak on behalf of Mr. Clemmons, who these people primarily oppose.
We'll move on to the next speaker that has.
Which is their right.
Gave his name.
Is my minute ticking or?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I'll make it.
Yeah, there's no name attached to the card that matches your name, so we're, we're going with the names on the cards, which is the procedure. Yeah. So what is that?
You don't want me to speak as.
If you had your name on the card, yes. So if you, if you have a card with your name, then yes, we will let you speak.
My name's on the card, right? I mean, it's, okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm, I guess I'm, I'm confusing everything here. I we were told.
So Mr. Favela, if there's no name on the card that matches his name, then we'll move to the, then we'll move to the next. Yes, we'll move to the next speaker.
So you don't want me to speak?
Only if you have your name on a card that is your name. So go ahead, Mr. Favela.
I told you, we didn't get, I didn't get here in time evidently to put my name, so somebody signed for me, so.
So next we have Tara Jenkins.
Okay, well, I was here too late then. Sorry about that.
Okay, first of all, I do live here in Fallbrook. I've lived in two addresses here. I have a son that I would like to attend May Ellis. And what I find astounding is that people assume Mr. Clements, who's a third-generation Fallbrook, who's married to a Latino, has two children who can attend here that are biracial, um, is not qualified. Now, he may not be the best candidate. We are just asking for an interview and we elected these officials to have the wisdom to decide. I think that's fair. As far as usurping the process goes, I, I know there was a petition on Facebook that could have been signed by anybody in the world to be presented to you guys, asking for this unelected representative, uh, pre-interview committee, which I'm not even saying is a bad idea, but it is definitely usurping the process of both the search firm that they define and the election process of having trustees from each area specially represent each community's special needs. So I don't, what's especially to me is often you don't see your hypocrisy.
So thank you. So Mr. Torrance has, go ahead, please. Whenever you're ready. Thank you so much.
Could, could I just say something really quickly? Um, I would just like to say one thing. I noticed a number of you had written your comments down. We would welcome your emailing us with your full comments that would have been. Because then it can come to, I mean, we get emails from the community. And you know, if one of us gets it, all of us sees it. That's so we don't violate the Brown Act. So we want to hear what you have to say. Dialogues are stopped at twenty minutes per topic. That's just our board policy. But if any of you want to share what you would have said in full with the board, please do so.
We not changed that twenty-minute policy. About that right now.
We can still get.
So we do have, we did have another card that.
Okay.
Forgot to pull.
Thank you, Mr. Favela.
That's Anna Hernandez.
I think we should keep them.
Since I, this is my first time speaking. Um, thank you for your time and I do want to see if she can read it for me. Hello, my name is Vala Avila. I'm a former student leader of FUUSD. Um, I'm here with Anna on behalf to present the petition to the Board of Trustees. Fallbrook Union Elementary School District is in need of a strong experience, well-credentialed, committed superintendent of schools, one who can inspire staff, students, and community. This person will be managing the largest entity in Fallbrook with the most expensive and complex annual budget of eighty million dollars, greatest number of staff members, and most expansive group of facilities and sorry, and serving the largest number of clients, five thousand students and their families. The FU's Board of Trustees has hired a consulting firm to do an extensive search for a group of highly, highly qualified candidates from which to choose a superintendent. I know we should have gotten more time to be able to get this message across, but before my timeline's out, I would like to point out that we have about two hundred signatures online and on this paper supporting this petition.
Oh, there's one, one more.
There was one more. This one is the last one. Cristobalina Gonzalez.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Cristobalina Gonzalez. I'm here representing my, uh, Latino community of the Spanish parents, most of it. I've been living in Fallbrook for twenty years already and I raised three children and, and here in Fallbrook and I went through all the elementary until the high school last year. My son graduates from high school, so now he's in college. So I, um, let's just keep him being here because I'm raising my grandkids. I have two grandkids already in elementary school, so my job, I think, is not done yet. So I just want to let you know the Fallbrook Elementary High School District is the largest employer in the rural San Diego County. So we must have a superintendent with the highest quality and the most experience as an administrator. Because we really, we really need a person who gonna be, uh, speaking Spanish so we can, we can have a better communication. Thank you.
That concludes our.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Travis.
We have to hear you louder.
That's fine. Okay. I don't know if she was on. Uh, good evening, Dr. McCray, members of the board, members of the public. Thank you all for being here. Um, it's my pleasure tonight to provide a brief update on the search itself for the superintendent of Fallbrook Elementary School District. The position closed, as you know, a few weeks ago and two weeks ago. And we were very pleased with the turnout. We received a rich field of candidates, including superintendents, uh, experienced superintendents, a couple of former superintendents that experienced and left their jobs, associate superintendent, deputy superintendent, area superintendents, assistant superintendents of head resources, people services, and human resources, uh, directors, uh, from the district level, uh, a principal, a credentialed superintendent, who's not a superintendent now, um, and one charter school teacher. So the, the field was full. Uh, we did have a couple of people who have accepted other jobs since then, so are now twenty-eight in the pool. We're pleased to let you know that our, the position description is on our website, leadershipassociates.org, under active searches. And if you go to Fallbrook, it is posted there for anyone that'd like to see that, uh, position description. Um, we've been at this work since ninety-six. Um, I've been at this work since about two thousand and one. Well over a hundred superintendent searches. This is a very rich field and we're really looking forward to you choosing which candidates to interview and then selecting a superintendent, all of which will take place, um, within a month or so. Uh, we are scheduled to present to you all of the candidates and with some recommendations of who we believe, the firm believes, you should immer interview because of the close connection of their experience, background, and education with your requirements for the job, which are detailed in the position description. Um, following that, interviews will be conducted, uh, on May twentieth. And we're very pleased again with the pool. Um, we won't interview all of them. That would take several days, but we'll interview, uh, the ones you select, obviously, but clearly the ones that you believe are appropriate and the finest that Fallbrook can get. So with that, I'm open for any questions from the board that you may have about the search.
So, um, I, I'm just, I want to make sure that our process is open, you know, that we invite our stakeholders from the district to participate. Uh, I know that I've seen that the high school, when they were looking for their superintendent, they invited community members to be part of an interview panel. I would like for our district to do the same. So, uh, I don't know if I, how I would mention that, uh, but I would like to see a panel of uh, stakeholders, uh, representing our different, um, you know, for example, a principal, a PETA rep, a CSEA rep, a D-LAC rep, a rep from migrant ed, a PTSD rep, uh, and someone from SPED as well. Uh, the extended learning program, which would be Lilian Perez. And I would also suggest that our board members also nominate one community member. Uh, I think it's crucial to have a second panel, um, given the importance of this position, given um, the experience that our staff have, but they should definitely be a part of this interview process.
So let me mention that the majority of our searches are just the board and we also have done searches with a community panel. The key is that we don't want the community panel to decide on a candidate that may or may not be the one you decide, but their input is valuable, critical, and if you choose to. And if you choose to, to form that committee, as you suggested, then certainly we can work with that. And they would give you feedback through me or through my associate who will be here, Bill Banning, who I think was, was around Fallbrook in the years. Did he work for you? Yeah. Yay. So he'll be here working with me. Dr. Lynch will not be available. She's on vacation in Europe, but she planned that a year and a half ago, so we couldn't, you know, stop her from that. But anyway, so we will be happy to accommodate whatever the board chooses. And our goal, as I mentioned, and we've done this with every search, certainly I have, to find the best and brightest that's the best fit for this community. And that's, you know, our elected trustees get to make that final decision with whatever input that you want. Yes, ma'am.
How, how would it work?
Well, the way I've done it in the past is this, and sorry, I just wanted to get closer to the mic because I just got done with a cold here.
May I, may I ask a question before you give that information connected to what he? So my thought is if, if we did something like that, my thinking is, as we are five on the board, it would be maybe every district, since we're all different districts, be two from every district. If that we, that's another.
Point of discussion for the board. And a really important point, I think. But you know, Mr. Favela had a suggestion and the board can discuss both of those. Both of them present a broad, I think, segment of your community, which I think everybody has a very strong opinion about this superintendent search. It's a very involved community. Thank you for that. So to your question, which was.
Well, how would it work? We have a date for the actual interview. So I'm assuming one of the dates on our calendar is for a meeting to hear about the candidates and decide which of those candidates we want to invite for a face-to-face interview. Is that correct?
May 11th, exactly. Now, on the 20th, may I interject? On the 20th, the way we have always done it is have two candidates come in at the first interview. One interviews with the community panel, one interviews with the board. Call that A and B. And then we switch them. So candidate that we're interviews with A goes over with B. And then we bring in C and D after that. They all go home. You determine who the final finalists are. And we would suggest that you bring back one or two for a final interview with, with the board.
If we go through a full day, I remember at one point you had said maybe we'd invite back five or six candidates, something in that range, maybe more. I can't remember what your recommendation.
I don't think coming, bringing back five or six.
For the first series of interviews.
Six or seven, I think, would be a full day. What happens is if I'm candidate seven, you're exhausted.
So say we go through all those interviews, community panels and board panels are, are switching with the same. We get through the whole day. When does the board hear back from the community panel?
Bill and I would collect information from the panel, strengths and weaknesses, or challenges, not weaknesses, but strengths and challenges of each candidate. We would bring that information to you. Knowing that the, you know, you're elected to do this, to select your superintendent. But every piece of information that they give me or Bill, it's gonna be me, me, I will bring to you.
With the timing of that being.
Right after the interviews are done. So that you, as you deliberate on who to bring back as final candidates, you've already been through all five or six or whatever you choose. And then you've decided who the best ones are to bring back, who are the best match for your community. Right? And you, that's who we bring back after you've heard the information during the deliberation that you're having. So that's a key piece of that.
Long are the interviews of the initial finalists?
50 minutes, five zero. About 12 questions or so, potentially one or more than that, but depending on when you see the questions that we'll present to you on the 11th, you're gonna edit some, you're gonna say, well, it's just about right for us, but nah, change it a little bit this way. Then we'll go ahead and make those changes, bring those to you. And our interview packet for both groups will contain a set of all the questions for each candidate with a rating form for each question for each candidate. So we'll collect those. Those are just for their use. But we will gain from them orally and then maybe looking at their, at their input if they, if they run out of time or whatever. I don't think they will, but if they do, we'll bring back what we see that they would, you know, have identified as strengths or challenges. And we'll give you all that. Then you deliberate, then you choose who you bring back.
Now, if I remember, let's see if I'm wrong, that, that phase when we actually meet face-to-face with the candidate, if, whether it's just the board alone or the board and a community panel, if I'm recalling correctly, the procedure at that point is everything has to remain confidential.
All confidential.
Right.
And let me expand upon that.
Yeah, please.
The reason for confidentiality is that these people are sitting in the current job now somewhere. And if they apply for this job and it's public, tough to go back home. Tough to go back home. I was just kidding. I didn't really want that job. Well, they've already interviewed for it. And if it's public, then, you know, I know some of the larger cities do that. But it's, it's really tougher in smaller, more intimate communities to do that because it's really tough on the person going back home to say, yes, I did interview and I didn't get the job. So that opinion of that superintendent from that district, put yourself in that position, has a tough time going back home.
And so to what extent have there been, if there have been issues with community panels releasing information ahead of time?
Almost never happened. It has never happened in my experience. They sign a disclose, non-disclosure, you know, they honor that non-disclosure as you honor all of your confidentiality agreements. And I've not had a problem with that, honestly. I have not. People are, you know, of high integrity, you know, they're, we have never seen that happen. And I'm certain it wouldn't happen here. If you choose to go that route, you haven't made that decision yet.
I just would hate to be the reason that someone, we.
Yeah. Yeah.
Creator someone's career.
Yeah. Well, that's the, that's the issue of putting out a whole bunch of names for the community to see because then everybody sees them. I know superintendents in my 21 years of doing this who lost their jobs because it was publicized. And the board said, you don't wanna be here? There's the door. That's not very respectful to say, you don't wanna be here, you should seek another job. Sorry. So, Mr. Favela, if you wanna expand upon your suggestion, and then Mr. Brad, you had one as well. So about who to put on this panel, first of all, to decide whether you want a panel, you know, by vote, and then decide which way you wanna go with regard to one from every district, representative, or as you said, a CSEA, C, UEA, no, it's, the teachers union. CED, I'm sorry. I apologize. FEDA.
Right. And the reason I recommend a number, that would have put us at a 13-member panel.
Which would tell us, run that down for us.
I'd love to have, I mean, I'd love to see more folks. So one principal. And then this would be decided among, you know, we'd have some time to decide to see if we can make it. But a seat for a principal, a FEDA rep, a CSEA rep, a D-LAC rep, migrant ed rep, PTSD, SPED, Extended Learning Program, and five community members.
Good.
And, and within that, it would be good to be conscious of, you know, the different organ, community organizations that exist in town. We even have some diversity within those community members, but that's a suggestion.
So this sounds like this is something we probably should be discussing this evening. So we can, I'm running out of time a little bit, so this probably our opportunity.
And I would tell you, we're having a special board meeting on Thursday of this week. We could make this an agenda item because it's gonna be an open session and closed session meeting for what we're talking about. So I can certainly add anything that, you know, you've discussed as an action item on this Thursday's agenda. Because we didn't list anything as taking action.
Right, right.
It was information. So give you a couple of days to think or.
Yeah. Maybe we could kind of share our thoughts so we see where we might be heading on Thursday. So we know what, if there's any research or work that has to get done, or if we need to run something past due. And if it's a little more.
I think what's most important is that if there are people chosen for the 20th, they should get advance notice. So earlier you could let them know, we're gonna take your entire day on the 20th. So, you know, and even if a group says, we want this person to represent us, then they'll be able to make that, that, you know, reserve that day. The other thing I wanna mention to the, to the panel is that, you know, there's always a concern that, you know, what if this person says they're bilingual and they're not? Well, para que todos sepan, yo soy nacido para mexicanos, mi primer idioma es español e inglés, así que por eso yo soy bilingual. Así que yo lo puedo probar. Está bien? Don't make sure they're bilingual if they say they are. If, if we have bilingual candidates, it's up to you.
Well, 13 sounds like a workable number. I think if it gets too much bigger than that, it's gonna be hard for anybody on the panel. I, I guess the first thing maybe to say is, do we wanna have a panel? I support the idea. I, I, I think it would be great to get that kind of feedback. And it should be a workable number. If it gets too big, then it stops being workable. Then certain people get pushed off and are silenced. And we don't want anybody in this group to feel that they're being silenced. And I think it is important that each of us as board members have one person that we can appoint. I, I wouldn't limit it to the district.
Each district, because it's.
But I wouldn't.
Being represented, because if we do it this way, the each district that we were voted in, right? So we need to represent our districts. And in this, this case, this is limiting a lot of districts, you know, it's only specific, it's very specific instead of per districts. So if we each pick two, that would be more fair, I think. I think it would be more fair if we were doing that. I don't know that we're doing that, but I'm saying. So that would be 10. And, you know, your, your numbers, it'd be close to that. But I believe that would be a more fair thing than choosing more the, the way he suggested. That's, that's just how I see. I just think it's more fair.
And, and one possibility is each board member makes their own choice. So if you wanna have two people from your district, that's perfectly fine. If I decide somebody in your district is fabulous and I'd like to give them an opportunity to have a voice, then, you know, because that, that way, both sides.
I, I'll interject for you. We can't even get people to put their names on the card. Who's gonna verify where they actually live? I'm being completely serious. I mean, you want us to take and verify and drive by the houses? And what I'm saying is, I think that takes up too much valuable time. You pick whomever you wanna pick, but not limited to just your area, because then it comes to a whole verification process that.
Definitely. Yeah, I agree with that. Yeah.
So maybe, maybe we do a couple of things to prepare for the discussion and ultimately an action item on Thursday. The suggestion has been, and feel free to jump in, because you've had community panels, principal, FEDA rep, CSEA rep, D-LAC rep, PTSD rep, migrant ed, SPED, Extended Learning Program. So that's eight plus one or two to set, depending on what we decide, either two appointees per board member or one appointee. So it's, it's a group of somewhere between 13 and 18. 18's quite a large. I mean, can you imagine like almost four times this group with one candidate? That's, that's, I mean, I.
That's also time on the individuals, the, the candidates, right? That's a, that's a lot of extra time.
Yeah.
And we're on a, we're on a time schedule, right?
I, I think one per board member should be okay. We just have to be.
Yeah, even 13 is quite a bit, but I think it's.
Well, not to have a dialogue. I trust the staff. The staff is F U E S D, as well as our parents and members of the community.
Well, I was almost going, wait, what about the people that are gonna have to work with this person? Side by side and know the ins and outs of the district. Not that I don't trust what our principals and FEDA and CSEA reps have to say, because I do, I absolutely do. But.
Do you have, throw out the ideas. I've got my pen.
Oh, no, because this is your thing. I just meant that I don't see the balance being, anyway, that, that was a concern.
We can consider anything at this point. We're just talking about.
Listen, I, I am putting trust in the fact that you all have the district's best interest at heart. That you want the same thing that I want, they want, and probably everybody else wants, is the best person for this position.
Right.
And so I'm gonna trust that the process works and I'm gonna trust that whatever you, you know, come up with is what's gonna work without trying to or the need to skew, sway, infer in any way, shape, or form, which is why I intentionally myself stayed way out of this process so that it isn't influenced by or anything like that, just really wanting to facilitate it for you so that if it needs to be on the board agenda, if there's something that needs to happen there. But I trust that as the elected officials and the people that we responsible for hiring the, you know, your most important and really only hire, that you're gonna want the same thing we all want, which is the best person for this district. And I guarantee you, I want the best for the students. I want the best for our children. I want the best for our community, the people that voted us in, that believed in us. And the teachers, the great teachers that do the great job of educating our kids and protecting our kids and being there for our kids. That's what I want.
Are there other, in the stakeholder groups you have had, how do the, in, how do the groups that we're looking at compare to those panels? Are there some that you haven't included or others that you would include? Like you've worked with panels before.
Yes, of course. Yeah. Well, I think you need to look at a couple of things. Certainly, the, the panels and the, we, we pretty much interviewed all of the folks that were, that attended our meetings, right, which were most of the employees, right? We didn't get to the one-on-one groups to all of the groups in your community. Because it was, you know, it was just not convenient. And even when we did a couple of evening ones, we got some, but not, not the whole community. So I would tell you that it, your staff has given a great deal of input. You know, not so much the senior staff. I mean, the management, the high management staff. But the, we've, we've had direct meetings with, with the others. They have given input, but I mean, there's just not as many of them. So if there's any lack, and I don't wanna say this in a way that is demeaning to anyone, but we didn't get to all segments of the community as deeply. They were just unable to attend our meetings. For example, the Latino community. We didn't have as many as we would have liked. We did have quite a few at our open meeting. I'm not saying that you overloaded that way, but you asked the questions and that would be the group that was least probably represented. that would be the group that was least probably represented in our formal meetings.
What, what we can do, I remember when we got the proposals from the various companies, at least two of them in their proposals had it mentioned of community panels and who they, who they invited to be part of those meeting panels. So we can go back to those notes. I can go back to those proposals, and it will show, and it'd be interesting just to compare if we're leaving somebody out, if we're putting in somebody that maybe we we don't necessarily need to put into the group. So I'm just saying that can give us some additional information between now and Thursday. We've all got that back in our homes and we can take a look. You know what I mean? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Because I just don't remember. I, I remember seeing it, and I remember they were different. They were different in size of panel. And I think they were a little different in terms of who they invited on the panel, but for the life of me, I couldn't tell you what it was. I'd have to go back and look at them. But we can do that. I think, I think it should be on the agenda, and, and it gives us a little time between now and then to do some of our own thinking about it.
Right, and, and after having this discussion, I would consider also someone from the cabinet. I mean, as much of our good representation of our stakeholders should be.
Okay. We don't need to take any action. It's just, okay.
Any other questions for each other? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much. Pleasure to work with you, really is.
Yeah, we're gonna move on to action. Resolution number one-two-dash-twenty-two-twenty-three, designating May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three as Employee Appreciation Day. It is recommended the governing board adopt resolution number one-two-dash-twenty-twenty-three, designating May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three as Employee Appreciation Day. Do I have a motion?
I still move.
Thank you. Second, second. Thank you. Let's have a vote. I, thank you. Ms. Lundin.
I, thank you, Mr. Favela.
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. McBride. Thank you, and I vote aye as well. Motion passes. Educational services, information workshop and conference attendance. And that brings us to our consent agenda. It is recommended the governing board approve the consent agenda as presented. Do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Thank you. Second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Vote, Ms. McBride. I, thank you, Mr. Favela.
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Lundin.
I, thank you, Mr. Ball.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Motion passes. That brings us to our adjournment at eight sixteen.